Okay, we are on camera here, folks, so let's get started. Welcome, everyone, to this meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It's 5:00 PM on Monday, May 7, 2018. I would like to call the meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Bolling?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Spatton?
Here.
Grunier? Wutrow?
Thank you. Item three is under public appearances, discussion with Tom Bjortson on the property condition at 153 Johnson Street.
He's here.
Yeah.
He's here, I think we just go to number two for, uh...
Okay.
The neighborhood cleanup and then Tom.
Okay. So, we're gonna go to, um, 3C. Uh, discussion of thank you memo from Director Public Works for neighborhood cleanup.
Steve, um, just a couple cards you see passing around, um, we had Leah and, uh...
Alyssa.
Alyssa, thank you. Obviously, you're profiled in the paper recently and, and credit this memo was written even before the paper came out, so I was glad to see the paper article come out. But these two young ladies who are in the audience tonight, um, took it upon themselves, they're kind of out in that Bryn Hill Drive, Perry Parkway, Leeward area, um, took it upon themselves to start cleaning up some of the area. It's unfortunately been, there's some construction efforts going on over there and, uh, there's been a lot of garbage that's been flying around. And, um, girls, I don't know if you wanna say, kinda what, what prompted you to start that? You can come up and, and, uh, don't be afraid, no one's gonna bite here. But you can, uh, these young ladies kinda took it upon themselves not only to start cleaning, cleaning up, but then also have kinda started a, a, a club, right? So, what can you tell us about that?
So, if you'd introduce yourselves, please, I'd like to welcome you to the meeting and we appreciate what you did. And more comments in a minute, but you go ahead and, and introduce yourselves and explain what you did, please.
Well, I'm Alyssa Shrimp.
And I'm Leah Searan.
And, um, our inspiration for the club was, um, we saw a piece of trash flow into the, um, pond near our house and we tried to get it out. And once we got it out, we noticed more garbage, so we tried to clean that up. And by the end of the day, we had about five bags of trash filled up.
Yep. And so, I just, I mean, when, when we see situations like this and when, uh, this was actually brought to my attention by a resident and, and, uh, the cards were, were dropped off at our, at the office. And when we get this type of, uh, input, I, I, it reminds me again what kinda great village we live in. Um, we're, we're small enough that, um, it can take the impact of just a couple people to do it, to do something, um, really impactful for their neighborhood. And especially in an area with new construction where there's a lot of stuff blowing around. And unfortunately, contractors don't always have that kinda same love for the community that we do. And, uh, so I just thought it would be nice to publicly thank them for, for their, for their work and their service doing this and, uh, also encourage them in their club.
Yeah, and I would like to second what Jeff had to say. We appreciate very much what you did. Uh, you're a great role model for other, uh, kids that are your age and we appreciate your thoughtfulness, thoughtfulness for the community.
Thank you.
That's very generous and, and I can only imagine where you may go as you continue to do things to impact the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, thank you. Any other comments that, I know the board...
I love the initiative, I think that's fantastic. Keep it up.
Thank you.
We have more ponds.
I think that's what the intention with the...
That's awesome, that's awesome, so, will you let us know how we can help you out with that?
Thank you.
Yeah, keep us informed what you're doing, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, we'll go back to 3A, then, uh, discuss with Tom Bjortson about the property condition at 153 Johnson Street. So, Tom, you'd like to have a seat. We're gonna start with Jeff giving an overview of, uh, what's been done the last couple years and we'll have, uh, comments from you, so...
Right. Actually, going back to March of 2016, this was one of the first, uh, kind of, uh, we'd received a, a, basically a neighbor complaint of a property at, uh, 153, uh, Johnson Street and, um, of, of some garbage in the backyard and, uh, worried about attracting rats and other stuff. And so, as typical in those situations, I follow up and, and, and take a look at it to see if there's, to see if it's founded on anything. And at that time, I, I was able to view the yard from the back, um, from, from the, uh, one of the neighbors there that was complaining, uh, complaining of the situation. I agreed that it needed to be looked at and, and actually, um, on that time, while I was out walking around the front, I met with Tom and, and we talked for quite a bit and, and I followed up with a letter at that time and just kind of basically saying, "We need to get this under control." And that was over two years ago. Through, I have a very thick file on this, it's, it's gone on for a very, very long time. Last fall, uh, we, or we actually had, uh, SafeBuild come in and I will, uh, um, SafeBuild, SafeBuild is our, um, uh, building inspection service, but they also help us out with, uh, some, some zoning inspections at time. And, uh, myself and the SafeBuild inspector and, and, uh, Tom and, and some other people, actually, we went around the site and we did, you know, determined a series of about at least seven direct violations, um, mostly dealing with garbage, mostly dealing with, um, dilapidated buildings, um, buildings that are about ready to fall down, um, that type of thing. And we did that because we'd gotten to the point where it's just, it was not being rectified by, by the land, by the occupant. The landowner is, is Tom's mother and, uh, she's, she's currently in care at a facility. But Tom and his, uh, sister, uh, Tom lives there and so does his sister sometimes as well. We've worked with Tom for a very long time on this and, um, you know, we're going over, well over two years on this. It's the, the most progress we've actually seen, um, occurred last fall when I, um, following this, um, inspection and lack of progress, um, we actually had to implement the threat of fines, um, based on a, on a per violation, per day, uh, situation, giving them a deadline and, and, uh, Tom's brother, uh, younger brother, right? Yes. Ty, um, has been involved with us and has been very instrumental in, uh, Ty is the, actually, I believe, the, uh, uh, caretaker of, of his mother's, uh, or a person, what is, what do you call it?
Power of attorney is the word, yes.
Yeah, power of attorney over that. And so, Ty's been actually actively spent a lot of time last fall in, in trying to clean up some things and was only able to do so much on his own. Um, I've at times tried to organize volunteer groups to come in and clean up the area and, uh, then I determined it was unsafe to be able to do that, um, for differing reasons. And, um, so we had to call that off. And, uh, you know, most recently, following this last fall's inspection, um, I contacted Ty again saying we needed to take a look at the property this spring after things had melted and, and get an idea of now where do we go from here? And that occurred, oh, about two, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, April 24th. I met the, uh, um, Ty out there and, and, uh, we toured the property and there's still a lot to be, to be found out there. I, uh, kinda show you a little bit of, these are inspections, these are from the property. Uh, these are inspection photos back from, uh, fall of 2017. We had a lot of, a lot of things in the patio that actually you can see the walls are starting to bulge out and be pushed out in certain areas. Um, let me zoom out of here. There are lots of areas of just garbage and debris around. Now, now these, some of these have been cleaned up. I'll show you some pictures from, from today or from, from two weeks ago. Lots of glass bottles around. It's just, it's kind of a, uh, an accumulation of a lot of different things throughout the years. Tom does do a lot of gardening, you know, and I've worked with him on, on trying to get some of that cleaned up. Um, it does not obviously, you know, as far as, um, the surrounding lands are, are, are very well-kept and, and, uh, well-taken care of yards. And you see just kind of other things that are, as I kinda scroll through all these pictures, you can kinda get an idea of, of what that is. Throughout this, um, Tom's asked for numerous times for more time. In the same time, he has continued to contact all of board members on a very routine basis. And, um, I've encouraged him to, to not do that as much because I think the time is better spent cleaning up his, his facility and his place. I don't believe it's fair to the neighbors to have this. And, uh, um, the, let's see, this, I'll show you some photos from... Hang on here. Get these from... Well, anyways, the photos that, the photos of today, there's still a lot of glass bottles, still a lot of garbage around. Really, I mean, there's been some improvement, um, it's just very, very, very slow in, in getting that point. So, when I was meeting on August 24th, um, with Tom and with his brother, uh, we were asking for deadlines. I think we ended up, uh, landing on June 15th. And that was at that time, just a little over a month and a half away from our meeting there, meeting that, at which time we would have to then institute fines again. It's a little unusual because in, in our, uh, area, or in, in the ordinances here, the, it's, the, the Village Board does not enact fines, it's the zoning administer, administrator, that's myself. And we really don't have a, 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 an appeals board or whatever that handles zoning violations. That's something I'll probably be working with in the future where we might create kind of, just like we do a public works board, where we would have an opportunity for someone to come in if they're in violation and everything, but that's gonna be in the future. So, you know, honestly, I'm kind of at wits' end as far as, and Tom, we'll let you speak here in just a little bit, but I'm kind of at wits' end with this. I know he calls, uh, you guys on a, a very regular basis. Um, I think there's been some things that have been said that have probably been, um, not true. And I think we've been extremely patient with him, we've met with him, we've, uh, I, I think of a number of times that we've met Steve and, and everything, um, his brother has, has worked very hard. His brother's not in the area, he's about three hours away and has a family and a job and, and everything else. And so, it makes it very challenging, um, for him to be able to do a lot. So, you know, that's kind of the, the story with this, you know, um, Tom has asked for numerous extensions throughout the years and, um, there's always a, a reason or a excuse for, for doing that. Sometimes we receive medical letters asking for a, uh, an extension. And it's, you know, it's just been a very challenging, challenging situation. So, when, when we were meeting a couple weeks ago, um, on-site, Tom made the request to, um, come before the, the Village Board and, and talk to you about this. So, that's the background information. I, I don't know if, uh, it'd be, what direction you wanna go if you wanna hear from Tom next, or...
Yeah, I was gonna have, have Tom talk and you'll have, um, up to the amount of time that Jeff just used if you need it. Remember, I talked this morning?
Yes, yes, yes.
Stay on topic and try not to ramble, Tom, okay? Go ahead.
Some of the pictures are outdated and I've got the garden and petter sheep and planning to take the shed attachment to the garage dome, even though I don't like the idea, and clear out the dog pen. A lot of that stuff is gone and obsolete, including Max's intimidating signs. The intimidating sign I don't like now is he's got one of an American flag on the back of his machine shed.
Let's, let's stick with your problem, okay?
Um, one thing I would, I took a hose out so I can get water to the garden. And another thing I would like to do is take a cat cage and put that in the garden so I can grow lettuce and not have chipmunks and small rabbits get the lettuce. Um, oh, yeah, you see how I got the cattle panel out in the back garden?
Yeah, Tom, these, these are old, actually.
Okay, the dog pen is gone.
These, these are current, these are current photos.
That, 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 that one is sort of current, but you should've saw the amount of bottles. I had to take all the bottles and stuff out of the basement because of getting a new furnace put in. Oh, that's the canoe that I wanna keep that my grandpa made. And I repaired the, the trailer, but needs to be improved. Uh, I took some of the plastic out on the shed, the, on the ice fishing shack. That gray container is great for leaves and I still have to sort through stuff with my sister who's been injured and sick and in the hospital with some hurt problems lately. I wanna talk things over with her. I wanna have somebody around me as I take the garage doors off since they don't have hinges and wouldn't be safe to, to do. And I am continually working on the problem there. You know, I used to, from Mark Bealow, get two village dump trucks full of compost, which I would take out into the garden. And I got that out of the front yard, one wheelbarrow at a time. And I've been really working on it and, um, I would like to, there's something here that I don't understand that I'm gonna get my glasses now, as, you know, that happens after you get older, to need glasses from time to time, so, this is...
We, we did tell Tom that we would not be delivering any more compost or, uh, uh, to the property until the property was cleaned up. That was something I told him a while ago.
It took a lot of time and I've been taking care of my old mother until the week before Thanksgiving. And so far, I've taken her around the block three times from the nursing home, you know, to see my tulips. Um, it said something about, yeah, the integrity of the patio walls, the front porch, I don't think anything's wrong with that. I wanna get Project Homes in to help fix where the chimney is where I just have styrofoam and underneath the roof to get the, where there'd be like an eaves, a new roof, and then there's an eaves with a couple squirrel holes. I want repairs to be done. And also, I wanna have somebody around as I take off the garage doors to put more things into the garage. So, and, uh, I've been continually working and I don't see anything wrong. It says, "I can't find it in here," about putting stuff on the, the bottom of the hose is not a good thing. My dad was a carpenter for as long as I can remember. We put that stuff on the hose to keep out the snow and the rain and everything. Um, I can do other things, I can take the red baling twine that I have for growing hops down and put up like jute hemp that wouldn't be as noticeable as the red twine. Um, I've been, I got a bottle of this tree killer stuff and, uh, I can take out of the dog pen small junky trees. I'm always working on things I've been taking. There was a lot of traps, um, muskrat traps and all kinds of traps, hundreds of pounds worth of stuff. You'd be surprised at the amount of stuff found in the, in the shed attached to the garage. Also, the garage is a historical building. Originally, a blacksmith by the name of Herb Jeffries had it where he would shoe horses coming off the river tracks, getting off the train. There's a chimney attachment, but you can't see it from the outside. It's been shingled over, I'll take the shed off. I don't wanna get, have my place condemned or anything like that. That's my home, my mother moved in there back in July of 58. I've lived there my whole life and I've had a medical problem now for over 35 years. And I've been getting friends together from time to time. Sometimes they do a real good job and then sometimes they don't show up and I try to do what I can safely do. I've been working at it consistently. Oh, lately, I've been gardening and planting garden and my sister's been sick and so on, so I've been taking care of her dogs too, the two dogs, taking them to the dog park. One of the things, my, along the fence, alongside the house, I have an animal waste container that Jeff keeps thinking is a bad thing and I don't see anything wrong with it. As I put the dogs out on cable and pick up the animal waste, it's a cat litter thing with a bag in it and a corrugated square thing. And we don't always agree on, on things, yet I've always tried to get along with Jeff. Um, can I say, I, I told you this idea a couple weeks ago about the church property, about if he was to rototill in leaves, it would absorb a lot of the extra dampness over there and help any problem that you have, it might not be the only idea. Um, I'm trying my best consistently in getting guys together. You know, I had traps in big 55-gallon drums with walnuts in them to, uh, give them a die and try and herd, and this is my historical home. Oh, that, what he's got up there is the shed that should probably come down. I've been finding a lot of stuff, you'd be surprised.
Tom, this is the garage, this is the, the garage?
The garage has got...
The garage is the, the ceiling of the garage...
The ceiling of the garage, I gotta be careful going in there.
The ceiling of the garage has actually collapsed inside and, and as far as putting...
But that can be fixed, it can be, stuff can be taken out, it can be jacked up, it can be repaired from the inside with jacks.
Yeah, it, unfortunately, I mean, what, what you can't really see well in these photographs is there's not really a, I mean, it's a, a constant maybe five to six foot deep of stuff.
Yeah, my sister's got a china cupboard back in there that keeps things up. But I've been still using the garage by the tour. That's where, have an unknown amount of dollar value worth of tools. There's my neighbor's signs.
Give me time, we've got about two minutes now to wrap up.
Um, I wanna keep on working hard and I don't want these fines and I've had my sister's dogs to distract me and I've also been taking my mother around the nursing home. I think sunshine and flowers are good medicine for her. She's 85 and doesn't walk, she doesn't even do what they call stand and pivot and she has to be steadied when they take the lift away so she doesn't topple over and hurt herself. I had her in, in front of the house today, I think it's good for her. I'm trying to do everything at once, all by myself in the mornings. I do housework, dishes, laundry, things like that, and some gardening. I, I got some rototilling done today. Um, I just wanna keep working at it. It's been getting better, don't you think so, Jeff? Uh, one, one time, we took out about five different, five different pickup trucks full of assorted stuff and you do have to admit, some of these photographs are dated.
Let's go back to the, let's go back to the...
It's still, it's a worse mess now 'cause I dug out my garden hose out of the garage.
So, that's, that's today's photograph?
I would say that's like it is. There's nothing wrong with having a few box straps around and need to sort out the tires and get things in. Um, that's the cherry wood that I wanted to, uh, save. There's the shed, there's my neighbor's place with the flag that I want taken down.
Yeah, but we've talked about the flag, there's nothing, the flag is not a sign and there's nothing wrong with it.
I wanna keep my table that's made out of pallets there because my dad made it. And then, on the bottom, is a thing for a bird pole to go up when they used to have purple Martin houses.
So, that's, yeah.
Wanna keep the dog holes and everything. I've been organizing and sorting through things. That one blue box is some cups that my sister wants to get and get rid of. Um, we got rid of the trailer, really, there wasn't anything, her camper trailer, there wasn't anything too wrong with it except that the oak tree had discolored it. I guess also the other things were that, uh, the other things were that it couldn't be screwed down because some kids had broke the thing and the directional's in the back, but given just two weeks to get rid of it. I see the, the red tarp thing...
Two weeks, Tom, we gave you way more than two weeks to take care of that.
What, to take care of what?
We gave you of the, of the trailer. The, the trailer was, the trailer was semi-assembled, here's, here's the trailer, um, zoom in on that.
See, there's nothing really wrong with it, it kept my sister's stuff good.
So, you got a minute to wrap up, you have kind of summary comments you wanna make?
Can I talk about another subject or two?
No, we're gonna stay on this topic. I think we've gotten to...
I, I'm working on things and I've worked on things today, taken out some of the plastic that came off the ice fishing shack. It's old, wanna keep the ice fishing shack because it's sentimental to me.
Okay, so, so, Tom, you said you wanna stay in your house. That's the same thing that everybody on the board wishes for too. We have no desire to have you not be in that house, we would like you to be there.
And I don't wanna go broke so I can't pay taxes, you know?
It has to be cleaned up.
I've been working on it.
Just let me talk, please. This has gone on for two years and there were times before that too when Mark was Director Public Works. And this, a difference I see in you tonight than from other times was earlier over this two years, you would argue about stuff a lot and make excuses and, uh, tonight, you've been much more willing to say, "I'm, I'm working on it, I'll keep working." Uh, I think what Jeff would say is, "You need to work faster. You need to find more time to work on cleaning up because June 15th is coming up." We would like that to be acceptable to us by June 15th and I think you can do that if you make up your mind to do it. No excuses, just go get it done.
It, it helps when, sometimes I like people around for safety reasons. Is that understandable? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I talk to you some other time on the phone or something?
Yeah, you can call me, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Steve, can we, can we ask Tom to quit calling all the board members?
Yes, that's one thing we wanted to mention was, uh, I think it'd be wise to not keep calling the board members. I mean, you're kinda lobbying to try and get you away and it's not gonna change. Uh, the board wants us to get done. I've seen no reason from them why we don't and...
I don't wanna have to put stuff off.
And, and you take the time you'd spend calling and talking to board members, go out in the yard and work on cleaning stuff up.
Is it okay if I have a cat cage out in the garden for growing lettuce?
Cat cage out there?
Like a squirrel box, it's like a winger cage to keep...
We, we've never said you can't grow, grow stuff back there, Tom. It gets, it gets overgrown and we get complaints about it, but...
Oh, I've had problems not being able to get rototillers fixed and lawn mowers fixed, they work now. It's turned when I can't leave them on.
Sounds like that cat cage thing would be okay.
Thank you.
Just make it neat and look, so it looks good, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Have a good evening. Take care. Okay, we'll go on to item B, uh, discussion of Village auditors and possible action. Uh, accepting 2017 audit, uh, and it notes the full audit is on the Village's webpage. Everybody who's watching who would like to take a look at that, so, you're ready for the audit report. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. I was told I have two hours.
Yes.
Now, that was wrong.
We told her to say that, Steve, just for you.
Yeah, I'm sure. That's what, all the time, they get me confused. I have my computer when I'm fully...
All right, um, good evening, I'm Tara Bast, uh, with Johnson Block &amp; Company, I'm a manager with the firm. This is our second year doing the audit with the village. I don't know if you guys wanna have a lead in, I just kinda started.
You start.
All right. So, you do have, um, a draft of the audit report that was available. I also handed out a summary report, which I'll go over this evening to avoid that two-hour, two-hour conversation. But, um, this, this summary report gives a brief overview of the contents of the audit report and then some highlights of, of different sections of the audit itself. And as I mentioned, it is in draft form, but we are, um, pretty much ready to issue the audit. There's just a couple wrap-up items to work with Lisa on, but I don't anticipate any material changes to the report. So, in the summary report, if you open up to page one, as I mentioned, it gives a brief overview of the content of the audit report. At the beginning of the, the audit, you have our, our independent auditor's report where we issue our opinion on the financial statements. We anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion, which means we feel the financial statements are free of any material misstatement and are fairly stated. After the auditor's report, you have the management discussion and analysis, which I don't believe I have a bullet point there, but that's kind of an additional narrative, um, from management's perspective with additional information that helps support the financial statements, gives a little more detail about things that happened during the year. Then you have the government-wide financial statements, those are the full accrual financial statements for the village. Uh, they're converted from the fund financial statements, which are the, uh, statements or the, the basis of accounting, um, that the village, uh, budgets on and records transactions on a day-to-day basis. So, you're, you have your government-wide and then you have your fund financial statements. The fund financial statements are reported, um, by major funds and then you have non-major funds. Uh, the major funds include your general fund, your debt service fund, your street projects and TIP District Number Three Special Revenue Fund. And then your, uh, water and sewer funds are also reported as major, uh, business-type funds or proprietary funds. The major differences, um, in the accounting between the two sets of statements are really the two main areas are debt and capital assets. On the full accrual statements, uh, debt is reported as a long-term obligation that is reduced over time as payments are made. And then your capital assets are reported on the balance sheet on the full accrual statements as assets net of accumulated depreciation versus on your fund statements, they're run through the income statement as revenues and expenditures. After the financial statements, you have your notes to the financial statements, which outline the significant accounting policies for the village as well as, uh, provide some additional, uh, information that again helps support the financial statements with required disclosures. Some of the larger disclosures with information are, are on cash, um, capital assets and debt. And then after the notes, you have, uh, required supplementary information and supplemental information, required supplementary... Required supplementary, supplemental information includes your budget-to-actual schedules as well as some required schedules with the Wisconsin Retirement System Pension Plan. On the bottom of page one there, I also note other reports that we compile, um, on behalf of, of the village. The Water Utility Public Service Commission Report, the PSC Report, that's due annually by April first. That was, that's been filed. That's, your water utility is regulated by the PSC and that's something that's required to be filed with them. They use that for rate information. And then also a, a report that's filed with the Department of Revenue that is due, uh, May fifteenth, which has been drafted, um, so we're ready to file that as well. Is the Municipal Financial Report, which the state uses to, um, help them calculate your state aids and transportation aids and things like that. On page two, I've kinda outlined, um, in addition to the draft of the audit report, there was also the management's, uh, communication packet. A couple, there are a couple of letters in that packet. Um, a lot of it is just really standard language, uh, that's required to be issued at the end of our audit. Uh, the first letter, Audit Matters, requiring Communication to the Governing Body. Again, standard communication, um, that notes any significant changes during the year. Or changes in accounting standards, which there weren't unimplemented. Um, but really, everything in that letter is standard language, nothing specific to point out. Uh, then our next letter is our Internal Control Letter, where we point out, um, our assessment of internal controls. In there, we do have a, uh, a signif, what's called a significant deficiency for preparation of the financial statements. That's very standard for municipalities, um, especially smaller. I mean, you're not a small village, but you're not a very large municipality either. So, um, relying on us as auditors to stay on top of accounting standards and implement all the accounting standards that are required to convert your financial state, or convert your books into the required financial statements. Um, a lot of, I would say ninety-five plus percent of our clients see that communication finding, uh, regarding preparation of the financial statements. Just, um, not having necessarily a, uh, an individual on staff that, you know, takes continuing education on auditing and accounting standards. Um, obviously, your staff takes continuing education on things, um, to, to run the village, but not necessarily prepare the financial statements. And then other comments, um, our management letter comments are just things to note. Um, always good to take a look at your internal accounting controls. And take a look at the last time your written procedures have been updated. I know that's something we've discussed with Lisa as well, just looking at those and, and updating those based on the procedures that are being performed. Uh, and then the other two management letter comments, the, uh, one on uninsured cash. Uh, at the end of the year, the village is, is a collection agency. You're collecting taxes and there's a lot of cash running through the village at the end of the year. And sometimes deposits can get, um, up above collateralized, um, amounts or FDI and, and state deposit insurance. I know, if you wanna chime in, please do, but the village does have collateral that is, the, the money is swept and, and covered. This was kind of a twenty-four hour, on-the-weekend timing difference, where you're collecting taxes on a Friday afternoon and the bank closed. So the money didn't necessarily, wasn't able to get swept out to that, those covered deposits. But then by Monday, your collateral was adjusted and it was covered. So, but just something we should point out for that period of time. And please chime in with yes, questions.
Yes, I just, uh, as long as you touched on this subject. The last sentence in that paragraph, uh, Board should be aware of this risk and should consider whether any additional security is desired. What additional security are you recommending?
Well, you do have collateral, so I mean, that would be the additional security. I know you've looked, um, at other options. I think was it the line of credit was a possible option. I know you were going through the, the RFP process with banks. So, um, just other options to make sure that, that the funds are collateralized or insured at the end of the year. But again, this was kind of a, a, a timing difference between, um, collecting taxes on a Friday afternoon and the bank being closed.
Okay, I just, I, I understand what you're saying, but this, this sentence was kinda vague to me and I didn't, I didn't know what it meant.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I didn't know if you had additional precautions you wanted or internal controls you wanted or re, or recommending. But, uh, I understand what you're telling us now.
Okay. No, I guess our recommendation would be just to, to make sure that you're aware that what the cutoff is with the bank at the end of the year and, and understand. You know, whether or not there has to be some sort of additional coverage at the end of the year, whether it be a line of credit or, or spreading the money out to different banks.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. And then the last comment, uh, just standard comment regarding expenditure and expenditures and excess of budget amounts. Um, your general fund, uh, in total was well under budget. Uh, there were just certain functions, um, I believe, was in the draft. Small amounts of, of, um, departments over budget. It's just culture, recreation and education was over budget and conservation and development. But in total, your general fund was u- under budget by two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Excuse me again, is that not okay? I mean, as long as the total budget would balance, i- is, is it a problem to have one or two areas of, over or under budget?
We do recommend that if it falls within the areas that the board approves the budget. So if you, your published budget is based on, um, general government, public safety, public works, if you do notice a line item, um, to either amend the budget to increase the expenditure line. And even if you're gonna use fund balance or reserves, you can say that you're amending the budget to increase the expenditure covered by fund balance. But certainly it's, we see that all the time. It's just a comment to point out, to consider whether or not you want to do a budget amendment at the end of the year, based on the actual results that they've taken.
But in reality, there's nothing wrong with the way we're doing it.
No.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question about the culture, recreation and education?
Sure.
Um, so I saw that it said that we had exceeded, uh, the budget for that particular bucket. When I'm looking at, um, I don't know which one this one is.
Page eleven.
Page eleven of, the one with fancy grass. It's a very technical term. Um, I noticed for that particular bucket in, in twenty seventeen, we spent about six hundred thousand dollars less. At least that's what it says on here. Is that accurate?
So that large decrease is related to pulling out the library budget from the general fund. So, and, yeah, a new fund was created and that, so yeah, that was a big piece of that category that was pulled out of the general fund. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so on to page three, uh, gives a brief, or a condensed view of your general fund balance sheet. Really comparative, uh, financials or balance sheet from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, uh, broken down by cash, which was pretty comparable between the two years. Uh, taxes receivable, which is the tax roll for two thousand eighteen's operations. And then other assets, which the majority of that in the general fund, um, is advances receivables from other funds. And then you have your liabilities, deferred inflows and fund balance. Uh, current liabilities, those are mainly, uh, year-end payables or year-end, um, bills due. December invoices payable and paid in January or February, and then also a large portion is just year-end payroll liabilities. And then again, your deferred inflows, um, that's again related to the tax levy, your two thousand eighteen tax, two thousand seventeen tax levy, um, for two thousand eighteen's operations. And then what's left is your fund balance, which in the middle of the page, we've broken down, um, the four different categories of fund balance that the village has reported. Uh, non-spendable fund balance, which on page four gives the detail of each of these categories, of the largest portion being those advances from other funds, is what makes up non-spendable fund balance. Uh, small amounts in committed and assigned fund balance, and then what's left is unassigned fund balance. Um, and you know, the question we get is, you know, well, how are we doing? Well, the one calculation we look at is, what's your unassigned fund balance as a percent of your next year's budget? So that's what those percentages are in the middle of the page there, taking a look at your unassigned fund balance in the general fund compared to your two thousand eighteen operating budget. And, uh, it's around, it's at thirty percent at the end of seventeen, and that is after, um, based on the village's policy to transfer any funds in excess of thirty percent of unassigned fund balance to other funds. We, we transferred some to your equipment, ca, capital equipment fund, and then also to your sick leave reserve fund based on, um, amounts provided by management. And at the bottom there, uh, just a condensed version of the budget-to-actual comparison for the general fund. Total revenues over budget, total expenditures under budget, and then an increase in fund balance after that transfer of eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, page five gives you a look at the rest of the village's funds, um, ending fund balance from the end of two thousand sixteen to the end of two thousand seventeen. Um, I will note that, you know, you've got TIF districts that fall, uh, have funds set up as special revenue funds and also TIF districts set up as capital projects funds. So, um, every year you've got your joint review board, which you'll look at those reports in total. But when you're looking at your, the performance of your TIF, TIF districts, you have to incorporate all of those funds together. Uh, pages six and seven are pretty informational, uh, give a history of the property taxes, um, levied, uh, over, uh, page six from two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen. Broken down, um, on page six is just the village's portion plus the tax increment from the TIF districts. And then page seven, uh, is a pie graph of the two thousand tax levy, uh, to be collected in two thousand eighteen. That gives you a look at, uh, the tax roll as a whole, not just the village's portion, but breaks down of that tax roll. What, what is the village's portion? What portion comes from the TIP, TIF districts? And like most municipalities, the largest portion being, um, your local school districts being the largest piece of that pie. Uh, page eight, uh, is a look at your general obligation debt versus capacity. Under state statutes, you can borrow up to five percent of the equalized value of the municipality. Uh, so right now you're roughly using twenty-five percent of your allowable capacity. Pages nine and ten, uh, take a look at the water and sewer utilities. Page, the top of page nine, uh, looks at the utility operations, the operating income or loss in each of those funds for the last three years. Um, water utility for two thousand seventeen had an operating income of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The sewer had an operating loss of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, I will point out that that does include depreciation expense, which is a non-cash expense. It's the allocation of your capital costs over the estimated useful life, so that's a non-cash out, um, non, non-cash transaction. In the middle of the page is, is the utility cash flows for the water and sewer utility after, over the last three years. And that's kinda where you can see where depreciation, uh, while it, while it has an effect on your, um, that income or loss. Uh, your cash flows in each of the utilities increased, um, in two thousand seventeen. Uh, cash flows in the water utility increased four hundred and eight thousand and cash flows in the sewer utility increased a hundred and sixty-three thousand. There's kind of a, an effect on, the effect of that depreciation expense, not on your cash flow, but just on the expenses. And then informational at the bottom, uh, a calculation of utility, utility cash balances by year, um, as a percent of your operating budget, just to kinda take a look at the reserves you have. And page ten, uh, that graph, a look, um, that's just the utility operating income or loss over the last three years in the graph form. The bottom of page ten, uh, as I mentioned, part of your general fund fund balance that is non-spendable is related to advances. The general fund has made to other funds over the years, and this is just a detail of those advances receivable in the general fund.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Where, where does the room tax come from? Do we have a hotel in Oregon or is it?
It will come.
So we're, we're doing something now with the numbers, though?
Well, we thought, we thought we were gonna have a hotel like back in twenty-ten, so we, we set the fund up and then the hotel didn't happen.
Gotcha.
So now it's just, now it's just sitting out there.
So I think this, this was some administrative expenses that were.
To set it up.
Yeah, to set it up that are intended to be refunded through.
Well, they will be used, right?
Yeah, there, at some point, the room tax will go in there and we'll pay ourselves back, just setting it up.
Thank you.
And pages eleven and, uh, twelve, and then also thirteen and fourteen, just give you a view, uh, or a three-year look at the general fund revenues and expenditures. Um, by source and, and by, uh, function. Uh, general fund expenditures, uh, like most municipalities, the largest expenditures are public safety and public works. And then sometimes debt service. And then revenues on pages thirteen and fourteen, um, and again, like most municipalities, your size, the largest, uh, source of revenue being taxes. Uh, then followed by intergovernmental revenues, which are those state, state aids, state shared revenue and transportation aids, who are the two largest categories of intergovernmental revenues. Those were the specifics I was gonna go over. I mean, I opened it up to questions or if there's anything you'd, yes.
I tried, excuse me, I tried to get your attention.
Oh, sorry.
Initially, but, uh, you were moving and that's fine.
Okay.
It's not a problem to go back, but I'd like to go back to and touch on page four.
Okay.
And my first question is, uh, a basic one. Is this a boilerplate page?
Well, so Jerry, you're looking at, he's looking at the, uh, required audit communication document, right?
Oh, okay, so not, not the summary report, okay.
Yeah.
So, and board members, that's what I put in your, in your.
Lot of matters requiring communication to the governing body.
Yes, yes, okay. So this, um, this letter is our standard letter on, in, on internal controls, yes.
So that goes to every client?
Pretty much all of our municipalities get this letter.
Okay, cause if, there are some things mentioned in here that are concerning.
Okay.
At least they were to me.
Okay.
Um, when you start throwing around terms like significant deficiency, it's like, okay, I gotta pay attention to this now. And then you read on and you go, well, that's not really true. And that's why I asked about the boilerplate. But the one thing that was most concerning to me is the statement that the village should designate an individual who possesses suitable skills, knowledge or experience necessary to review, understand and take responsibility for the financial statements. Now, I happen to know we have somebody like that.
Yes, yes, you do. So we're not saying that you don't have that person. That's not the intent of this comment is, we, we wouldn't be able to necessarily provide a clean opinion if we didn't feel that you, you had someone who understood your financial statements. So that isn't the intent with this letter. I know, uh, this is the result of an accounting, or an auditing standard that came out several years ago. That required auditors to, um, assess internal control. We're not providing an opinion on internal control, but we're just pointing out, um, any. It's a letter of material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which I know can be strong statements. But one of the, one of the main areas that came out of that was, you know, can, can the organization prepare their financial statements? It would be preparing this whole report. I mean, in a big corporate world, um, the client has someone on staff that prepares this. Hands it to the auditor and this is what we audit. Like most of our clients, I have hardly any that would, well, actually, I don't have any that hand me this report, but, um, it, it boils down, you, your books are clean, you know, we, we feel you, the village is very organized, you know, they had everything ready for us. It's mainly the conversion between the fund financial statements and then the GASB thirty-four conversion to the full accrual statements. There's a lot of accounting standards.
Good old GASB thirty-four.
Yes. I, I would, I would say, you know, with a lot of my clients, if we, if there wasn't the GASB thirty-four conversion, there would be no question that you could prepare your financial statements. There's just a lot of conversions and, and technical standards that go into those conversions that, you know, it, unless you wanna go back to school. You know, it's, it's hard to stay up on top of those, which, you know, is why our clients rely on us to stay on top of those and then prepare the financials or dra, assistant drafting them.
We don't want her to go anywhere, that's why I'm bringing this up.
No, no, I, this is very standard language. I know the, the language in the letter and we've tried to soften it and, you know, in our auditor speak, we think we're softening it. And it may come across harsher than we intend it to, but, um, in our opinion, it's, it's nothing to be alarmed about. Um, it's something that's very standard.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there other questions? Looks like there's not.
All right, well, I know it's a lot of information and in a very short period of time.
Must last two hours.
Not two hours. Um, but if there are ever questions that come up after you, you know, look at things or you, I walk out the door, um, feel free to funnel them through Lisa and I can try to answer them as fast as I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Sarah.
Can we take a vote to accept this?
No, I was just looking back, be sure I didn't miss something. So we need a motion second to accept, excuse me, uh, the two thousand seventeen audit.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Does that need a vote, Paul?
No.
Call in favor.
Hi.
Post, motion carries. Thank you. So I have three D, uh, discussion with Randy Glisch regarding village accepting the restoration and rehabilitation award for pump house ten-man power project. So Randy, welcome.
Well, thank you much. So on April twenty-seventh, I had the privilege to represent the village at the Wisconsin Association of Historic Preservation Commission Conference in Platteville. of Historic Preservation Commission conference in Platteville. The village got two awards. One of them, I hate to say, one was for me, so I'm just going to say it. I got an award for advocacy, but well, that's not the important one.
You're in the village.
Yeah, I'm in the village. The other one that we got was for restoration and rehab category for the pump house and the tin man. And I think this, for me, someone who has worked on both of these, this is a big deal for the village. And if you saw, I think I gave everybody a copy of an article I wrote in Observer just a couple of weeks ago about how lucky we are to live in a village that has old buildings and these wonderful homes. And I'm going to keep promoting that because I think, I mean, people have said to me how lucky we are to have these things, and we are, and we need to realize that. So the other thing is that, I mean, it's a big deal, and I just want to thank all the, everybody in the community who gave money and the contractors and everybody who participated in both of them. I mean, I had no idea what the hell I was doing when we started. I was going to landscape, remember that story? Yeah, so, I mean, from the money to the contractors to the plants and everything that was donated, this is a big deal for our community. And I need to point out a couple of people, and one is going to be, I'm going to get Mike first, because Mike and I worked on the pump house. We didn't know what we were doing. We had lots of reviews because it was on state historic registry, so we had to get everything reviewed, even the landscaping. But oftentimes, there was daily phone calls with the pump house. And then luckily, Jeff came along, and then Jeff and I worked and others obviously worked on the tin man. And it has been, I often say this, I still get people coming up to me, we got a call not too long ago from somebody in Nebraska, saw our video on the tin man and was interested in saving their tin man. So, you know, we're sort of on the map. And the other thing I have to say is, you know, these led to other things, as you know, the food pantry, now the youth center. So how lucky we are. So Steve, I'm going to give you this award, I'm going to keep the other one in my house. But the other thing I want to point out is between Jerry and Steve, I was going to pass this around, this is a new addition to the, something for the picture. We have a local photographer who has taken a picture. It's called, I think it's called Winter Night.
Yeah.
And it's a-
Beautiful.
Of the pump house and the tin man lit up at night.
From our living room, right?
From our living room, yeah, yeah.
Very nice.
So Steve, I'm going to give this to you, and we're very lucky. I mean, and I'm just going to keep promoting the historic preservation because, I mean, we've got some beautiful buildings and homes, and we need to preserve them.
Yeah, we're also lucky you moved here. And I have to say that you kept repeating a word in your comments, and that word was "community."
Absolutely.
And the end of that is unity, and your leadership has fostered even more of that, and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to give this to you, Steve.
Thank you. We previously got pictures, so.
I should point out, too, I missed the, for, thank you to the village board who, after we did the pump house, saw what we did and came through with some funding to help to do the tin man.
Yeah.
Because that was, they had a $260,000 budget at one time, and we were able to do it, and it's great, so, thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Where does something like that get displayed? Is that go, can that be displayed at the pump house?
So let me, the photographer has donated a much bigger version framed, which is actually across the street, and it'll be displayed in the pump house. These will be actually for sale as part of our, sort of our maintenance and things and-
Randy, want that back?
Yes, yeah. And we just did a, you know, we just did a plant sale thing, too, and actually, should tell you, we raised, sales were over $800. We didn't get a lot of money, but we, my sister from Las Vegas even sent us a check donation, so we're doing good.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so move to item E, discussion with village's finance advisor, David Ferris from Ellers regarding 2018 borrowing. There is a note in the village administrator, which I'll read. The board can make one motion covering all the resolutions, as long as village board members are provided with the opportunity to request separate action on any of the resolutions. If any trustee requests separate action on any of those, their request will have to be granted, so. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Dave Ferris. I'm from Ellers. I'm actually about five weeks into working for Ellers, but don't worry, I've been around a while. I was at Virchow Kraus when it was named that a while ago, and I spent 16 years in Wanaquay as a finance director. Took a little two-year vacation at Baker Tilly to work really hard, and then Ellers kind of came after me and asked me if I wanted to join their show, and I'm actually really excited to be there, so. Tonight, well, first of all, thank you for letting us present your 2018 financial plan. Tonight, we have two issues before you. There's a $650,000 general obligation promissory note, series A, issue, and a $3,925,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond, series 2018B. Now, would you like me to present these together and then you take action, or do you want me to do one of them? You can take action on that one and then do the other one and take action on that one.
I think we'll do them all together unless somebody wants one pulled off.
Okay.
It looks like all together.
Perfect. So how did we get here tonight? The village staff and Ellers staff got together over the numerous phone calls and emails and pulled together a project schedule and pulled together the documents that you basically have in front of you to review tonight. The documents before you tonight are called pre-sale reports, and what pre-sale reports do is memorializes some of the purposes of your borrowing, as well as your planning and what goes into the sale that'll happen on June 4th. I'm going to start with the $650,000 series 2018A issue, and I want to, you need to catch up to me on this? I'm going to have you turn to page five in that document. I think it's after all the resolutions if I saw.
Oh, it is, okay.
I'll explain why there's so many resolutions later. Page five. So I think it's the-
It's a table that has-
Equipment and project. So this schedule is broken up into two different columns. One is the notes and one is the bonds. The reason that there's some of the projects and equipment broken out to the notes is because certain, one thing, there's certain things you can't use bond proceeds to finance. An example is the municipal building improvement projects that are in here. Another reason that you might use notes, because notes usually fund things from about one to 10 years. You might use notes because the useful life of that project or that equipment is better matched to that type of a note. Bonds usually finance things that are from 10 to 20 years. So in looking at, since we're on the first one, the items that are in your notes are one of those two reasons, or because village staff has looked at the dollar amounts and decided that maybe it'd be more appropriate to use notes. Is there any questions on the schedule of equipment? I'll come back to the bond side when we get to the next document. So then on to page six. What page six is, is a, basically the repayment of the notes broken out by funding source or fund. So the levy is the debt service fund, and it will finance the projects that are your general improvements. And then there's some water utility projects within this borrowing as well, just $45,000. But those, the revenues from the water utility will actually pay for those. And then the farther right columns are just the total of it, coming up to the whole $650,000 repayment. The next page, page seven of this document, is really a schedule that pulls the project costs together and lets the village staff and Ellers help solve the tax rate for the debt service on this. I'll kind of go through this, I'll walk through this this first time. I won't go through the schedule again for the bonds, because it'll be the same schedule in both. But the first column is really your equalized value, and that's important when we start to calculate out the tax rate. The second column shows you the percentage change in equalized value. Your 7% or almost 8% increase was a known that you received in 2017 that you used to calculate your 2017 tax bill that got collected in 18. The 2019 increase, I believe you had a TIP district close recently, and you're taking advantage of some of that increase from that value of that closed TIP. And then we've kind of been very conservative about the increase in growth going forward. As you can see, it's like from 2% down to 1%, just to be conservative in that calculation. The next column is all the principal and interests from your general obligation debts, whether it's bonds, notes, state trust fund loans, maybe bank notes. From that, we take away amounts that are paid by different funds, like the water utility, sewer utility, or a TIP district. And that gives you the net levy for debt service that, you know, the 2018 amount, I assume, is the amount that was levied for, for the 2018 revenues to pay your 2018 debt. And then the tax rate is basically that dollar amount divided by that value that was in the first column. So that's your existing debt. The next two columns are the proposed debts that you're considering tonight, the $650,000 promissory note and the $3,925,000 bond, bonds, okay. From that, we take away what the sewer and water utility participate in these borrowings to come up with the new net levy dollars that you'll be taxing going forward. The next column shows you the change in what the levy dollars do over time with these new bond proceeds in. If you look at the amount in the 2019, it looks, you're increasing your levy dollars, but because of that, oh, do you have a question? Because the value increased in 2019, you had more value to spread that increase in levy dollars over, and so what ended up happening is it reduced the amount of the tax rate in the 2019. So when you look at that tax rate column, you see it's going down right away, even though you borrowed money. What we want to tell you is that really gives you a lot of flexibility in your future financing. I can tell you that when we did borrowing at the village of Wanaquay, a lot of times that levy went up a couple of years until we got up to our debt service tax rate policy amount, and then we'd start coming down. So for your tax rate to be coming down right away is a really great sign. It's a good, healthy, flexible kind of thing for your future. And then the last two columns are kind of a, how does the tax rate impact the average homeowner? Village staff provided us with the value of $275,000. If you multiply that by the column just to the left with the tax rate, that should be the tax for that property going forward over the life of all your debt. Do you have any questions on this schedule? Then I'm going to bring you back to page one. I'll come back to that graph in the next issue, but I'm going to take you back to page one in the executive summary, just a few pages back from there. And I'm just going to kind of touch on a few things that are, there you go, that page. So the issue is a $650,000 general obligation promissory note, series 2000A. The purpose of these bonds is to fund some of your capital projects, which include equipment, street projects, and general building improvements, as well as water utility projects. A little further down the page, under the term and call features, you'll find that you have the option on March 1st of 2026, if it makes financial sense, to prepay the issue or the debt payments that come due on March 1st, 2028 and 2029. So anything on or after March 1st. So if it makes sense at that time, and you, and, you know, hopefully, we're the ones running the numbers, and we tell you, hey, you could get some savings from this, that on March 1st of 2026, you could call those last two payments. The bottom of this page is the rating area. As of last year, you were rated a AA2. We will be having a conference call with village staff and Ellers staff to talk about your financial health, talk about what you have coming up as far as development or future borrowings. Moody's will ask a bunch of questions to gather some information about you, and they'll go back to their committee, and they'll come to the conclusion that, you know, this is the rating you should be. As long as your health, and based on your audited statements and the fact that your fund balance has the same percentage, as long as your health is pretty consistent, I don't know why you wouldn't be affirmed with a AA2. That's a really good bond rating. And that next step up to a AA1 is actually, you have to have a lot of value to get up to that next level, because we are always trying to do that, too, and Moody's was always telling us, you're not big enough, so. You know, that's the thing, is, you know, as you continue to grow, make sure your benchmarks are in place, and if that day comes where you hit that, all the thresholds, they'll consider you for a AA1. But don't be disappointed with AA2, that's a very strong rating. On the next page, the method of sale and placement. This is a competitive sale. What that means is that underwriters that are local, regional, or national will be bidding on your debt issues. In some cases, the local bank may be a bidder. In other cases, a bidding place named Bankers Bank sometimes includes the local bank in on the bid. So it gives plenty of people a chance to bid on your bonds and notes, which hopefully gets you a really good interest rate. On page three, under risk factors. Now, the only risk factor really that you have with this note issue is that the water utility will pay a part of the bond or of the debt payment. Now, why that's a risk is because if the water utility didn't have the funds to pay it, the debt levy would have to pay for it. So hopefully, that isn't an issue. Under the other service providers, I just want to point out that there's other players in the financing. Corals and Brady is your bond attorney, your bond counsel. Bond Trust Services is your paying agent, and Moody's Investor Service is your rating agency. And then on page four, we have a proposed debt issuance schedule or your timetable. I'm here today to go over your pre-sale reports. The official statement will be released around May 23rd. We'll have a conference call with Moody's either the week of May 21st or May 28th. And then we'll be back here, whether that'll be me or Don, we'll see, on June 4th to let you know how the sale of your bonds went. That'll be held that morning. And then your money will be hopefully in your bank account on June 20th so that you can start spending money on your projects and your purchases of equipment. Do you have any questions on this issue? This next one will go a little faster because there's a lot of things that are basically the exact same. Let's see, so I'll turn you back to page five. We've looked at the equipment and project schedule once. Now, what's different about bonds, and if you look at your agenda and you see that it goes on like a half a page of resolutions, is because you are required for bonds to approve each purpose. So when we talk about purposes, we have to combine all the street numbers to come up to a resolution that says that you're using it for streets, and so every legal usage of the bonds has to be approved by resolution. After you approve all those purposes, you still have to approve the total amount of the bonds as well, which seems like double the work, but you still have to do it. So those resolutions, really what they're doing is they're allowing you to, you're authorizing the sale of your bonds on June 4th. Any questions on the equipment schedule? Page six, very similar to page six under the notes. This is your repayment schedule based on sources. The only difference on this one is that you have the sewer utility participating, so the sewer utility will be making part of the debt payment as well. The next page is the one that I went through quite detailed, and I won't do that again. And so then I'll lead you on to the page I skipped earlier, which is- And so then I'll lead you on to the page I skipped earlier, which is page eight. This is a trend in the municipal bond rates. And what that orange line or yellowish-orange line represents is the five-year trend in the rates. We wish it was back in 2016 so that we could give you a rate that's as low as 2.8%, but unfortunately, things have been trending up a little bit. But the, the rate is up about the five-year average, so it's really still a very good rate. And we're hoping that it comes in right in that area, if not lower. But we'll see how, how it goes on the 4th. Back to page one in the executive summary.
A lot of skipping around here.
Well, I just want to make sure you hear all the important stuff. So this is a 3,925,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond, series 2018B. The purposes, once again, are to fund some of your capital projects, including streets, leaf collector, public safety building roof, fire and EMS equipment, public works building and park improvements, as well as sewer utility and water utility projects. This, once again, is a bond that you can call. So if it makes sense on March 1st, 2026, you will be able to call anything that is due on or after March 27th, March 1st, 2027 through March 1st, 2038 at that date. The rating call we talked about earlier, we'll be doing that in a couple of weeks. The method of placement on page two is the same competitive basis, giving underwriters, local, regional, and national, a chance to bid on your, your bonds. On page three, the risk factors are, just as I discussed before, except the sewer utility will be involved. So the risk then is that the water and sewer utility would not have the funds to pay for the, the debt payment, and so you'd have to rely on the debt levy. The players, the bond attorney and everything are still the same. And the debt issuance schedule timetable is the same. Is there any questions that I can answer?
I have a question.
Sure.
David, is it, right now, our interest rates are trending up. So it would be very unusual to prepay. I know you mentioned that we could prepay at certain times, but you, you see that happening in this climate?
Well, you know, the one thing is, is that it's about eight years out. Maybe those interest rates will come back down. Right now, if you, you know, if, if you had something that is callable right now, that maybe you took out seven years ago, you probably wouldn't refinance it, because it's basically the same rate. So, you know, maybe.
Okay.
Things kind of like to, like to vary a little bit over time.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
If you want to make one motion, it's up to the board.
I'll make one motion for all of them.
Okay, so the motion here, Jerry, is move to suspend the rules, including section 2.10 of the municipal code and adopt the following resolution. Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
It's a good motion, Jerry.
You're, you're reading my mind.
Discussion or comments?
Need a second?
Yeah, and there we go.
And would anyone like to remove any of the resolutions from the motion?
Doesn't look like it. So we're all set now?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
That takes us to item 3F, discussion with Robert Kane regarding Polco services. So, welcome.
So if you don't mind, I have a quick slideshow, just kind of go over Polco as a whole. So, my name is Robert Kane. Born and raised here in Oregon, graduated in 2012. Went to Whitewater and graduated last year. Time has flown, so it's crazy that I'm already a year out of school. But started working with Polco about 20 months ago. And these guys are military veterans. They started their startup down in Texas, moved up to the Madison area because of family reasons and stuff like that. So that's how I joined on with them, and, so yeah. The platform itself was designed, when the founders kind of saw or seen these issues pop up in civic communications. Town hall meetings, you have the vocal few that come and really like to disrupt and really give their opinion. But sometimes, they're not the majority. Of course, empty meetings are always a possibility too. People may have not, not have the time with kids and stuff like that to participate. Overloaded communication channels, Facebook, there's email, there's phone calls. There's a lot of channels coming in, but there's really no good way, good way of tabulating that information. And then you have the voting hackers. I was told, whenever I do a remote demo, or people are told that's what I look like, but, but it's not me. So when they were designing it, they had these sorts of principles in mind. I'm not going to run through all of them, but I'll run through a few. So more participation, which kind of sounds a little scary. But the way we see it is that when you kind of open the door a little further, you still have those loud voices kind of projecting their input, but then you also get some of the rational people too. So if you open the door a little more, make it easier for people to participate, you get some good input. And then when they do come, and when they are participating, you want to make sure that they're informed too. So providing the background and details on an issue or a question, or kind of the focus of the question. Data-driven performance management would be another one I would point to. When safety or public services are just, if you're curious to hear how they're going, this is a good platform to use, as well as save time, staff time and effort. This can be managed pretty easily by one person, maybe an hour or two a week. So really, not, not so much of a time commitment. The simple process is post, share, and analyze. So on the left there, you have a question card. Basically, it's just a little card, a voting widget, that a person can go on and vote. And if they click into that page, there's a place for more background details and agenda items. You can have videos, just information can be given there. And then you share it out through all the communication channels. So if you have local newspaper, Oregon Observer, I keep a pretty good tab on. Facebook groups, Nextdoor, email, Twitter, really anywhere, anywhere somebody learns about something going on in the community, a link can be shared there. But all that data comes back to Polco, and we verify users as they come in so that we do know they are a resident of the Oregon, so that gets rid of those hackers. And then you're able to analyze that data too. So when we verify them, we also get a bit of background and demographic information on them, and that may help understand any opinions coming in. All that can be put out on a map. And then also a comment section too. So we give users the ability to comment. They can comment on the side that they voted on, they can only comment one time. So that gets rid of a lot of that mudslinging and angry comments coming in. So when posting a question, we do help, we work pretty closely with the city to craft the right question. You can't just open the door up and say, what do you want us to do? And like, it's just not, I mean, that's not really smart to do. So we craft the question in a way that kind of gets at that good input without digging too far. And just kind of observing and kind of talking with people in the community. I kind of thought of these different areas for questions to ask. So what's your favorite part of our downtown? What's something that could maybe be improved? How convenient, I know parking isn't issued in downtown. How easy is it for you to park, and where are other places to park? JCPark improvements? How often do you use JCPark? And when you're designing JCPark in the future, is there a way of using that input? Brushing yardways, when I was here, they were talking about Lynn's property, a temporary space. So do you plan on using that? With the new library development, I know it's fairly early in the process, but what are the top three reasons you go to the library? And when designing a library in the future, you can use that input. And then construction and business development. If you're curious on kind of what business development is to bring in the future, or your tech park, or I'm sorry, business park, you might be able to use that input. And yeah, another one, a good question I thought of there is how would you rank the relationship between the village and its businesses? With Licon and just other businesses here in Oregon, it's a pretty interesting and unique relationship, and maybe just kind of hearing what people think about that. So yeah, as I mentioned, how Polco spreads through a community, that little ballot can be put on other websites too. So Oregon Observer has their online newspaper. They can write an article and then have a question at the bottom asking, what do you think? Of course, this question can be spread through social media. We have a mobile app that anytime a question is posted, people get a notification. You can have printouts, you can share that direct link, and then a weekly digest email too. So if you think of like a survey as like a one-time touch and they're done, with Polco, we like to send people an email saying, hey, there's new questions out. Come on back and participate. So that's kind of our model of engagement, is kind of this continuous back and forth with questions. Generally, cities can post two to three questions every two weeks or so. It doesn't have to be with any or every agenda item. But just if there is a question or if there's participation that could be learned from, we make it easy. And this is kind of where we like to think we sit between government and citizens. You have that data-driven confidence if there's a question that relies on a lot of communication. And citizens are, they know that they're informed and they're being heard too, which is a good way to build the community. And this is our pricing options here. A lot of our municipalities use tier one. It's unlimited questions, responses, breakdowns, PDF report. And then we have a live question bank too. So our team, we're up to 10 people now. We have two retired city managers, some technologists and political scientists. So we're just devoted to kind of making it easier for people to participate. And yeah, I'm a join the team, and I believe in that mission. Just living in Oregon, I see it as a good use.
Thank you, are there questions? So how much response do you get to the live question bank in a typical community of this size? Do you have any idea?
So yeah, it kind of builds with that followership model. So the first question you post, you might get 75 to 100 people. And then that next batch, those 75 to 100 people will get repaid. And then whoever else sees that new question, so you kind of grow that engagement. So our goal is to aim for 5% to 10% of the voting population after 10 months or so. So it continues to grow.
Okay. Questions, comments, anyone?
I'm curious about the initial rollout of this, to try and get that initial 75 people or whatever. How do you, I mean, do we use, like, would you, do most municipalities use their list serve? Or is there one specific way that works? I know you mentioned all the different ways we can use it, but.
Yeah.
That initial rollout.
So yeah, usually email distribution lists, if you have them, people subscribe. Newspapers too, I think in Oregon, there would be a perfect example. Saying there's a question up here, go and vote, and I'm sure that would get a lot of good response to it. As well as Facebook too, we do some Facebook boosting to boost arbitrary kind of cards or advertisements for people to find it.
How do our questions form? Do you do, would we say, go ahead and make a survey with this question, with this wording and these choices? Or, or do we just give you a general idea of what to ask about, and then you write the questions? Or has that worked?
So we work with you. Ideas, it's more of kind of a consultation, but we kind of figure out the topics at hand, the different options. We have a survey science methodologist on our team, and she reviews the questions for any sort of bias. She finds a lot of, I mean, bias you really wouldn't even notice. And then we go ahead, we kind of, it's a drafting process back and forth. We would definitely work with you to create the questions.
So Mike, you're thinking, refer this to a committee?
We could. I mean, I, I, at this point, I was being very honest with him in the email. I don't, I have some ideas how we can maybe use a service in the future, but not at this point. One of the things I've been thinking about is whether or not we wouldn't want to use it to do some civic campus surveying. But I don't think we're at that point, you know, in the process. So you could refer it to committee.
So you think this should come back during the budget process on the 12th?
I, possibly, yeah.
There's obviously implications for the budget.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I, and I think this is where I would want to be involving the new planner into the, into the process.
Okay. Do you have any Dane County communities on board right now?
Yeah, actually, Dane County was the first kind of major beachhead that we've had. So 12 cities and municipalities in the area, including Dane County itself. We have Madison, we work in Milton, so we have Milton, Verona, McFarland, Sun Prairie, a lot of municipalities in the area.
Okay, good.
But yeah, if you choose to kind of hold off on it, I can always, I mean, I can always.
Yeah. Yeah. So we do our budget process mostly in October. So I think this will come back during our budget process for more discussion.
Sure.
I've, I've always liked the idea of, I think we make better decisions when we have data, and this certainly would help with that, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll go into item 3G, discussion with Alexa Carlson on the 2018 Parade of Homes events on Thursday, June 21st, regarding the street permit and closing of street for Parade of Homes and possible board direction. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So I'm Lex Carlson. I work at Ideas That Evoke in Madison, which is a PR and marketing agency. And so we're working with Parade of Homes at all of their different sites around the Madison area to not only do marketing, but also host events so families can kind of see the communities, see what they're all about, and kind of get more of a sense for that, and kind of show people that it's a lot cheaper than they might think to build houses rather than just renting. So we're targeting a lot of younger families. So the event that we're hoping to plan is called Rock the House. So it would be like a block party style event in the Legend at Bergmont neighborhood. And in that map right there, it's on Bryn Hill Drive, is right in front of those four pink homes. Those are the Parade of Homes locations. So in front of that, we would have a band, The Love Monkeys. They're based out of Milwaukee, and they're a very fun, energetic band. And the audience would be the yellow, so the stage would be pointing towards the houses. So the noise would be going away from the rest of the neighborhood, which is to the left when you look at the map. And all of those orange, red, and gray houses aren't currently inhabited according to Madison Area Builders Association, who we're working with. And the purple homes, those are ones that are still being developed. So yeah, is there anything? Should I just keep explaining the event to you, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are going to have then food in the orange section. So we're going to have three different food carts from the area where people can come and get snacks. We have kid-friendly options like snow cones, because we really want this to be about like a family event. And then we are going to be working with Lonely Girl Brewing Company, which I believe is based out of Wanakee, with a beer table for adults that they could purchase beer on a ticket system at the event. And then, as I mentioned before, parking would be located in front of the purple homes that are still to be developed. And we're hoping for the concert to start around 6:00 PM and go until around 8:00. And we would have cleanup done around 8:30 PM. And we anticipate about 100 to 150 attendees.
Did you have comments you wanted to make, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I just have a couple of questions. The, the street, they say that, are you requesting closure of the street? Or is the parade requesting closure of the street? Because, because we haven't received any request of that yet. Normally, they'll call and, or they'll, they'll come in with a request to close the street.
Okay. So we've been working with Madison Area Builders Association, which is the people that host the Parade of Homes. They had told us that they had street closure for the entire parade, that that gets closed off.
We haven't, we haven't received anything from them yet, so that's why. And, and sometimes, are we talking about, I guess the question, when for street closure, typical street closure is just closure to through traffic, so there's barricades, but there's, but the, the street is essentially still open. It looked to me like, in, in reading some of this, that you're planning on setting up a large tent. Is that in the roadway?
That is currently the plan, yes.
What size of tent is that?
I believe it's going to be 20 by 20.
20 by 20, okay, for the band or for?
Yep, for the band, and then the rest of it's just open. It'll be rain or shine, so.
Mm-hmm, okay. And because I, I did, I did speak with the fire chief earlier today, just because when I, when I started reading through this, and I, I was trying to figure out, okay, how does this all work? And, and figuring that a tent probably wouldn't be set in the front yards, because most of those front yards are usually placed on Friday before opening of, of the Parade Homes, because they're always up to the last minute. You know, there was some concern from the fire chief as far as, you know, we, usually with street closures, we allow street closures, but it just, if there's a fire or something kind of event, it can be pulled back to the side and then still allow emergency vehicles, whether it's ambulance or fire or police in that situation. Is this closed off to the public and just by ticketed people? And how do you plan on doing that? And what, I guess the board, we asked the board how you would feel about closing off the public property for a private ticketed event, I think would be a question, and how, and how you plan? I think would be a question, and how, and how you plan on, on doing that and accomplishing that. Because I did do a little research and the Love Monkeys, it actually looks like a fun band and probably would draw quite a few people. And so I was, I was going to ask, kind of 100 to 150 attendees seemed kind of low to me. The other, the other concerns I just had were, we have a very sensitive neighborhood that's just to the east of this. And, and they've been kind of very sensitive, especially they're coming off of a season of construction and garbage. That's, this is the area where the girls were cleaning up back here in this pond and everything. And, and so it's kind of a sensitive area for there. We have, we have to, I guess, if you approve this use, you'd be basically giving them the, the ability for that, for that sound level. That sound level will never meet our sound ordinance for a 10 decibel rise over ambient. But it would be like a special event sound, you know, amount. And then my question is just, and then the parking. You know, you show parking along here, this is Leeward Lane on this green lane here. And, you know, I can guarantee you that the neighbors down on Leeward Lane will probably flip out, you know, and I, and I, I think that was one of the questions along the way somewhere is if the neighbors have been contacted. And you're correct that there aren't really any neighbors over here in this area, but, but this whole area is over here is completely built out. And obviously they've had a construction project in their backyard and are a little on the, the raw side right now, I think. So those are some of my comments and concerns.
Okay.
I, I did, I'm sorry, I had these, I'm sorry, but I did ask Candy, I said, how would they get a liquor license? She had the answer, of course she did, you know. Madison Builders Association would, would be a, a club.
Okay.
Because I was concerned about the, the whole special permit.
Yeah, I wondered about that. So Jeff, one issue you have is using the, the public street for a private.
Just a question if that's something that, you know, do you feel, we, we shut down, it's not, we have block parties all the time or in, in the summertime. And, but those aren't, those aren't really closed. We don't close the sidewalks. We don't force people that, you know, we don't have, aren't telling people, you can't walk your dog down here because this is closed. It's really more of a, literally it's just a barricade across the street. And if there were neighborhood fire, those barricades would come off, tables would be moved and people can get through. This is more of a, I mean, I, I know what it takes to kind of set up a band and all that kind of stuff and a stage or whatever. It, it gets a little more on the permanent, not permanent side, but it's not something you just pull aside if, if there's a emergency situation.
Chief, your thoughts? Happy, with you next, man.
Well, my thoughts are obviously how are you going to control the alcohol? You know, you said you're going to do ticketing, but normally, I think that Jeff reminded me this is happening during Summerfest, which brought to my attention that we normally double fence around something like this event. So that's going to be pretty hard to do across the street, I would think. So I don't know how you, you plan on containing the alcohol. And so underage, it's a family friendly event. How are we going to keep the, those separated in this type of environment, especially with a band there? So that's, that's my primary concern.
Yeah, we typically would have a security plan presented by the person that requests this, if the chief would have to approve. So I think that's kind of where he's going with that.
Absolutely.
And we had talked, I know Jeff had mentioned that, about fencing off the area and we were talking about fencing off that table then. So.
What do you mean by table? What is that?
I guess it's not, we only have the one vendor. So I believe they have a trailer, I think. And then they're planning on setting up two eight-foot tables where they're going to be selling the beer at. So we'll have the three food carts and then we're going to have the beer further past that. So it's kind of in its own area. So it's easier to hopefully maintain.
Right. So you're kind of in a public place. How are we containing the alcohol in that area? And then again, how are we making sure that we're IDing people and keeping that away from minors as well? So that's kind of a challenge, I think, in that area.
Yeah, so that would have to be covered in a, in a security plan that would be approved by the chief.
Okay.
I haven't really looked into this at all, but the issues that I've just noting that I think need to be addressed. So obviously there's a street closure issue and I believe we have a permitting process for that. There's an alcohol licensing issue. And then the other issue is, I think, a zoning issue. I mean, what you're talking about for this event includes food service and live entertainment, food and beverage service and live entertainment. Anything else as far as kind of the activity? And so I'm just not really sure.
Sound.
And what?
Sound.
Well, yeah, that's the live entertainment with the music. So I haven't looked at this from a zoning standpoint. I mean, it's obviously a residential neighborhood. So generally speaking, we don't have food service and rock music.
Correct.
In the residential neighborhood. There may be some kind of a temporary zoning approval that you can get, but I haven't looked into that.
I think, Jeff, did you send this to Mike Slavny to see if this needed a special event permit through the planning commission? I think we did.
Yes.
And he didn't think it was required, but he made the suggestion about why not having it at the clubhouse. All the issues go away if it's up at the clubhouse. But I guess you, you don't want to do that, right?
I would be, I would be surprised if our zoning code allows you to have the sale of food, alcohol and a rock band in a residential zoning district without something. I would think, unless that can be handled with just a street closure permit, but I doubt it. So I think we'd better figure out what we're going to do from a zoning standpoint. There is, some zoning codes have temporary uses that are allowed. We'll have to take a look and see if.
That's what's in the, that's what's in the zoning code.
Like a special event, temporary use.
That the planning commission has to grant.
And, yeah. So I would just, I guess I'm just trying to make a list of what are the approvals that you need. And so it's the street closure, it's the alcohol, and it's potentially a special use temporary zoning approval of some kind. And each one of those procedures takes a little time to get through. I'm not, I don't have the roadmap in front of me on these, but somebody will need to really be on top of making sure they understand what the application requirements are and what the procedures are.
This is from Mike Slavny. He said, so who is invited? Just the neighbors, the parade participants or general mission? I guess you've answered that by that's basically ticket holders of, in the parade, or the parade ticket holders. It may require a significant amount of parking unlike a block party. So I think that's some of the concern. And I think.
Temporarys.
Yeah. The most straightforward way would be to address this as a temporary outdoor assembly land use, see section 2069B. We would need a zoning administrator to approve a temporary use permit. I personally would not feel comfortable without that. At least some approval of the village board here. And that, I gave you that street use permit and everything for there. And then we asked for, Mike says to comply all activity, including cleanup, but have to cease at sunset. I think you're probably well before that. I think 8:30 is, is at that time of year is fine. You know, establish maximum amplified sound limits with you and the police department and sound direction and then site plan, which kind of have a site plan there. And then we also need a street closure permit. And it would be easier if all parties concerned in the event were held in a park or indoors like the Burg, Burg of the Country Club. So, yeah.
So you can either make it easy and do it at the country club, or you can go through all these permitting processes and do it down there?
I mean, I want to be clear. I think, I don't, I understand the, the desire and we, we really do enjoy the parade coming to town. In fact, I think I had great success with it and we haven't had any, we haven't had any problems with the parade and they've shut down the street and we've had, and it hasn't been a problem because they're in great areas all the time and, and that type of the stuff. The, the problem we have is, is when we, when, you know, you have an announcement to the neighborhood like, we're here, you know, at 100 decibels on a, on a Thursday night of Summerfest week. And Summerfest around here that week, it's a little interesting, right?
Sure does.
And so I, that's why, you know, it's something new for at least us to handle internally here. And we want to make sure that it's just something that is, you know, not a, not a train wreck of responses from the neighbors and that type of thing. I mean, I think there should be something notified to the neighbors that this is going to occur, you know, in advance of, of that and everything. So.
Maybe, maybe even inviting the neighbors. I don't know. Is that a possibility?
Yeah.
Like within a block area or something?
Yeah.
I, I think the issue that somebody raised at the beginning is parking, you know. I mean, I actually do not know where all the people are going to park, to be honest with you. And the problem is, is you've got, I mean, you've got the hill going up Alpine Parkway. So that's something that is really going to have to get looked into is parking. And, I mean, it's a public street, the public streets and people are right to be on the street. But typically in a, in an event like this, you know, the chief will support, and people start parking for an event like this. They, they park over driveways, they park too close to streets and things. And so without having a parking lot, that, that's going to be a, that's going to be a challenge.
See, there's only about, I mean, from this corner down to here, there's only at 400 feet of parking. I mean, it's before you start getting into these people's side yards and in front, you know, in front of their house and that type of stuff. And like, there's really nothing we can do to keep people from parking in public parking areas. It's a public street. But it's hard to explain it to, to individuals at times too. You might be able to park some people down here on Bryn Hill Drive because if you're going to have this closed, well, no, because this will then be open. The only closed part will be up here, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Could I just ask a question? So I, I'm trying to remember like what the approval procedures are here. I think we just saw from Mike Slavny's email that at least under the zoning code, the zoning administrator has the authority to issue the temporary approval. But I heard you say, Jeff, that you want board input before you do that.
Correct.
And then the alcohol license, is that just a clerk issuing for temporary?
Yeah.
So that would not have to come back to the board?
It, it could.
It could if the clerk wanted.
We have one more, we have at least two meetings, two meetings before the event.
Technically, the clerk has the authority to issue.
Temporary being licensed, yep.
So, so far, and then the street closure, I don't remember, Jeff, what's the process for a street closure?
That's just a street closure permit.
And that's also public works record?
And chief.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, these are all approvals that are under the ordinances at least, things that can be approved at the staff level. But I, but staff, I think, wants to know from the board whether you have any direction you want to give to them. So they can take that into account before they have to process these applications. I think that's what I'm hearing.
That is correct.
Are those outlets going to be open by then? If you're closed down the road, is there, how many ways in and out?
Bryn, Bryn Hill will be complete.
It will be?
Yep.
Okay.
And Leeward will be complete. So, yeah, they're paving this, this one.
So Bryn Hill will actually be out to Lincoln?
Correct. Yep. They're working on that this week.
So people would actually could be parking on Lincoln as well.
Yeah, I was going to ask if we could sign that no parking that.
Yeah, because that's so wide there.
Well, actually this does, it becomes a lot wider because now this becomes an urban section all the way along here.
No, I'm just saying as far as notifying neighbors, I could see.
Oh, yeah.
People are going to be parking all over the place for the event.
Depending on how many people come. And that's, that's, and how, and how will you control, you know, let's say, my wife and I say, hey, we, yeah, we want to go see The Love Monkeys. Are, are we, we come down here, do you have staff over here? Or do you have people over here that are checking tickets and saying?
Yep.
Sorry, you can't come to this. And, and then someone's saying, well, it's a public street, I can go wherever I want to. That's all what I see. I mean, I don't. You know, it's one thing when we have a fenced off tent at, at the Summerfest, but it's another thing when we're talking about. I mean, I'm trying to think of a time where we've closed down a road for a private event like that.
And is that how you're controlling it with parade of ticket?
Correct, yes.
It's no one else's allowed?
Yep, it's a pre-sale.
Gotcha. Okay. That'll be interesting.
Who, who can buy a ticket? Anyone who wants to go can buy a ticket, so.
Could they buy a ticket at, at the event?
Um.
My chance?
I am not sure yet.
Okay.
I can ask though.
That may be important to know.
Has there been any talk about doing this at the clubhouse?
I did tell them that suggestion. I'm not the one deciding these things. So I get that that would be a lot easier. But they would really like to have it in front of the houses. So it's like showing the houses off, I think, was their main thing. But I can definitely bring it back up to them because it does make a lot of sense.
Yeah. And a lot more app to happen, I think. So maybe there's a way to provide incentives to be down where the houses aren't come up to the clubhouse. I don't know what that is, but it seemed like you might want to work on it. So.
If there's no houses on, in those lots, what about just putting it on that grass and dirt?
I think we had discussed that at one point. Madison Area Builders Association, I think they're kind of weird about actually like us putting stuff on the lots, like with the dirt and everything for just, I think the construction workers, they don't really like us having stuff on top of it. They want us to stay in the street, from my understanding. But I could ask that as well and go further into that.
Like pose the question, you know, more or less weird than we are about closing a public street? See what they say.
Yeah.
Good question, Jim.
I'm wondering how the band is going to have power.
Um, we're going to have generators from the different contractors to help power their music.
Okay. More, so more noise?
Well, and there is, I don't know how to deal with the noise issue because I can't imagine that a rock band at that site could comply with our noise standard.
Yeah, how do, how do we, how do we deal with that as law enforcement if someone calls and complains about the band?
Yeah. And so that's a real concern is, I, I wouldn't want to say, yes, go ahead and have a band there. If we know that that band will be violating our noise standards, it really puts us in an impossible position. So I guess we have to decide that, is that, is that consistent with our noise standards? To have that kind of live music, amplified music there or not?
In the residential area?
No, I don't think so. I mean, our, as we've determined under previous situations and some violations of, or reported violations is noise, and noise can be very difficult. Even me talking here, going somewhere probably between 40 and 60 decibels, you know. So it just might change of, of talking can actually have a fluctuation of 20 decibels. What, and our, and our standard is plus or minus eight. So how do you, you know, how do you, it's a very difficult thing to, if Mike Slavny were here, he'd say that's a real difficult thing to measure. It's not something that's consistent. It's, and, and I think our, I think our, I think our rise is like eight or 10 decibels at the property line.
Yeah.
What's the property line? We have the, the street.
Well, that's the other thing that's interesting. So to me, the, the, the answer is, we don't authorize the amplified music. I mean, maybe we could authorize other things, but the amplified music, if we know that's going to violate our noise standards, then we don't authorize it as part of this approval process.
Unless we could get the surrounding neighborhoods to consent. I, I will say the one thing that's going in your favor is that the event has very definite beginning and ending times and it's earlier in the evening. It's supposed to be over by 8:00 PM. And most people who work the next day will be able to sleep okay and it, you know, it's a limited time. I, I think a lot of people in the community, I mean, I know I would, would be more forgiving of that if they knew in advance and it was a limited time and it was at a definite end time that was reasonable.
I'll just give you an example of one of the things. I, I actually have another community that's having some similar issues where they have authorized an event like this with live music. And now there's a business owner who has an outdoor service area. Said, well, I want to have live amplified music too. And they're really kind of in a difficult position trying to explain to that business owner why. Because they're saying, well, that would violate our noise standards. And he's saying, well, are these people over here violating the noise standards? And I just want to be treated like everyone else. And so I've mentioned that because I'm in the middle of that right now. And this reminds me of that.
That's a good heads up, man. Any other thoughts or questions for Alexa?
I just wanted to say also that I like Ginny's idea of inviting the neighbors.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, too, I like that.
I mean, that's, if you have a party at your house, the best way to not have the neighbors call the cops is to invite the neighbors.
Except in this case, you'd probably have to go out of a three-block radius, right?
Well, yeah, there is that.
That's the difference.
Well, I mean, it's 150 people. What's 30 more?
Well, don't, they, I mean, they don't have to be free, you know. There might be some more tickets you can sell.
Okay, so increase in noise level over ambient level, and ambient, it can be a topic of discussion, is three decibels.
Yeah, but if you scroll down, if the noise is of the type that music would be in the next one, periodic character, hum speech, et cetera, minus five. So that's the adjustment that you would apply to music.
So three minus five is minus two.
Minus two. So you have to be less, you have to be, make negative noise.
Yeah. Hence, hence the problem with how we, how we try to, to get around this. And Matt's exactly right. It may be. It may be a perfectly fine event or anything like that. It's just when challenged on it by somebody else, we have to be careful kind of what, what we open.
It still doesn't answer the question if I get a call from a neighbor about the noise, how do I address that?
Um, I would say we don't have proper equipment to, no. I would say it's Summer Fest, we're really busy, sorry. Yeah, I mean, that's just the reality. Joking aside, here's the answer. If you're going to allow this, you have to know that there's going to be, there's going to be this noise and you're essentially making the decision that it's okay. And in my opinion, my advice to the police department would be to say, tell them the village board said it was okay. That's what I would, because that's really where we are.
I think that was Brian's plan, actually.
Yeah.
Out of doubt.
The village board said it was okay and so call them.
I think Matt's example that, then what, what comes next?
Well, we, we, we may have another event at another, another business in town for another event that same type, we're in the same type of situation. I know it's coming, so.
Well, Ziggy's might want outdoor amplified music.
Well, he, they do. And the planning commission has noted them.
That's right, an extra residential. And it came, the topic came up when we were looking at the S I P for the Ice Arena, too. Remember, they were talking about concerts and, and that, but that was going to be a temporary, temporary, and honestly, the, the music there is going to be phased to fourteen, which, you know, really would not be an issue at all. So, you know, it's a little different. Again, it's kind of site specific, but we get noise from the, from the racetrack. I mean, you can hear that on a, on a nice evening. You can hear them revving up and down and stuff.
So the advantage of just whispering to Matt is what's the difference about having it at the clubhouse is that that noise level's measured at the property line. So if you get to the clubhouse, you think about, you've got the pool, well, you got the pool to the south, the course across the street to the north, and you got the clubhouse, and you really just have.
You got some houses there now.
Part, you have a couple, yeah, I know, I just thought of that. There's some to the.
You've got the driving range up there, face it south.
If I could ask, has the Parade of Homes done something like this in other municipalities? And if so, how have they handled this?
This is the first year we're doing experiential events like this with the Parade of Homes.
So it's a test case?
Yes.
Where else are you trying this? Are we the only ones?
Um, so we're going to do a similar outdoor concert in Wanakee. And then we're doing other events like a market during the day in Cambridge. And then an evening mini concert, more acoustic concert with a smaller group of people with a house-to-house food event.
So other comments?
Outdoor concert in Wanakee, like in a residential neighborhood?
Yes, I believe so.
So I think what, I think what staff needs to know is, are you okay with the live amplified music? And are you okay with the service of, this is at a conceptual level. You're not actually voting on anything tonight, but feedback to staff, any feedback to staff on amplified music, service of food and beverages, including beer and wine, probably just beer and wine?
Um, I believe just beer, no wine.
Just beer? And I think that's really what staff needs feedback on.
Will the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Because those, again, we're, we're now at early May and this is mid-June event, so the clock is ticking. And these are all things that could be approved at the staff level, so now's your chance to tell staff what you think.
In other words, if you don't want it, I want to know.
Yeah.
Where, the safety plan, would that come through when they do the temporary alcohol license? Is that when that would be ironed out?
Yeah, usually it's done at that time.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Would some of the noise violations go away if we faced the stage the other direction?
It doesn't, it, it, the situation, we're in a residential neighborhood, so it, it doesn't matter what direction you point it, really. It's still going to be.
What's west of that neighborhood?
It's still going to be a violation of that. But I, I think right now, let's, let me go back to that.
It's, it's, it's the course facing to the west.
Yeah, so that's kind of a buffer, isn't it?
Facing here, you know, you're, you're obviously facing, these are all established homes. If you're facing the other direction, yeah, it's, it's actually quite a bit less if you're facing, if you were to face directly west.
Yeah, it's the orange part, isn't it?
Yeah, and these aren't, these aren't occupied. There's no one, there's not a, you know.
There's nobody living in there.
There is someone living in one forty-six or one forty-five. That's a, the house has been moved into.
Yeah, I think the stage is facing like northeast.
No, stage is facing.
So that's the parking, the stage is in orange, right?
No.
Food is orange, stage is yellow, and parking's green.
And this is, this is the direction of sound.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
So feedback for staff?
I'm not a big fan.
Yeah, I think there's too many hurdles to get it done by June twenty-first. And I think it, you know, it'd take a lot more time to do that. It's even more time may not make it happen. So I think there's a lot of risk in working hard to make this happen and it not being approved.
Do you think it would still be feasible if we moved to trying to do it, doing it in the clubhouse?
Well, so in the clubhouse, you've already got proper zoning, probably, to serve food. Yeah, are we talking inside the clubhouse?
Or talking outside?
Either, either one, whichever would work.
I'm not sure, but I, I assume they already serve food and beverages in the clubhouse and maybe outside. And I assume they have the proper zoning for that.
Yeah.
So then you don't need any zoning approval.
Just the noise.
You don't need to close the street, so then it's just a question of the noise. And so I would work with the club. I would, I would take a look at whether you think you can configure the, the live music in such a way that you're not going to violate our noise standards.
Okay.
Bother anyone in the neighborhood.
I mean, we had a similar, wasn't the clubhouse, weren't they kind of in the, in the hot water over fireworks? And we found out that we didn't have fireworks ordinance, so we had to kind of, because we had weddings going on up there with fireworks and we kind of said, okay, we need to revamp our fireworks ordinance to allow that. Same thing with the noise. I mean, and we're looking at the noise situation, but not actively right now.
So my only point is if you decided not to do this, you know, in your email, you said the, the street was already closed. It's really not. Typically, if you do share, sends a request to the village requesting the street to be closed because it's a public street, so you want to pass that message on.
It just gives us a chance to notify fire and, and public safety.
And obviously, our resources are going to be pretty slim during this time, so.
That's true. That's a good point. Any other thoughts? Any what for staff right now? Two of us have said we have reservations. Anybody else?
No, I agree. There's reservations and as Mike brought up, how do we tell future requestors?
That was Matt. Yeah.
Or Matt, that we have a problem with their back then.
Yeah, no, we, we do have block parties, one block party I'm aware of, they do hire up, they have a band. They come and they.
That'd be my block party, probably, Union Road.
Yes, yes. So, so, I mean, maybe talk to that a little bit, but it's not, we're not talking ninety-eight decibels.
No, it's, it's a, the, the band is like two of the main members live on the, in the neighborhood. It, it's a local, it's our neighborhood band, so to speak. And they do have a tent, but it doesn't go the entire width of the street. It is all the surrounding neighbors, so the parking is not an issue. And it's B Y O B. We don't sell anything. It's like a potluck. Everybody just brings food. And so it's not out to make money. And while we kind, we consider it a semi-private event because the only people invited are people that live in the neighborhood. But if somebody walked up and said, hey, what's going on? We're not going to be like, oh, you can't be here. It's private. I mean, we, we'd say, well, it's a local block party, but if you want to stay, you're welcome to do so. And we, we don't have that issue. Nobody ever comes by and does the crash at once. Did you? Good for you.
It was fun.
You'd be welcome. I know you. It's cool.
But from a band standpoint, it's not blasting out.
No, it's not super loud. It's, and, and they're usually done by eight. I mean, it's like a six to eight kind of a thing. It's earlier evening and we're all wrapped up by, by ten at the very latest.
But it is amplified?
It is amplified. But who's going to complain? All the neighbors are there.
Yeah, well, yeah, I don't know.
But that's why it works, so.
That goes to Jeannie's point, though, right?
Yeah, or take the neighbors.
You want to have a party, invite the neighbors.
Okay, so I think feedback to staff is reservations.
Okay.
And for you, you heard that, plus time-wise, it's a problem. I would think to get this done. So it sounds to me like the clubhouse would be a great place to look.
Yeah, definitely.
It's already there. I think they got the permits. It just solves virtually all the issues. Okay. Do you have any other questions or comments for us? Okay. Sorry, this wasn't easy for you.
What I'd just ask you, you know, once you have a chance to go back and talk to area builders and your group and everything like that, and you have kind of a direction, if you could just kind of let me know so that we can kind of be making sure everything, what you want to do then can still be kept on time for, for you.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item four, Village Attorney and Village Administrator Report. Item A, Review of Schedule for New Youth Center Building and Possible Board Action. We're going to declare current public works, cold storage building and a surplus.
So the schedule is as presented, we're trying to work with them as quickly as we can to get approval and so they can build their building. So the schedule we're putting in.
So we need, need the motion for the cold storage building, please, surplus?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Thank you. And that's so it can be torn down, right?
It, actually, we'd like to offer it on an auction, so I think we can get some money for it. So, but we have to do it quick, so that's why. And that would just go, any money we would make at an auction there would go towards the, the new building.
New one, yeah, okay, okay. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Item B, Discussion and Possible Action, the T D S project. Item one, Approve Signing Conflict Waiver Request.
Maybe if I could speak to this briefly, so with the T D S request to move very quickly into the process of getting permits that would allow them to build out their infrastructure in the village, including in the public right-of-way within Eastman areas in the village. We're not really sure where they're going to want to go. We had a discussion at the staff level about how to manage that from a legal standpoint. This is actually kind of a specialized area, believe it or not, this question of regulation of local right-of-way and interacting with telecommunications providers. And so I suggested that we hire Anita Galucci, who I know does this work. I mean, this is kind of what she's known for is representing municipalities in connection with working with utilities on right-of-way issues. So we contacted Anita and she actually said that her firm had been hired by Sun Prairie to do the same thing when they built out in Sun Prairie. They had to go through a conflict waiver process there and they're asked, and they would need to do it here as well because their firm apparently does employment law-related work for T D S. They do like labor and employment work for them. So in the Sun Prairie situation, she said that T D S authorized and approved their firm representing Sun Prairie on the right-of-way work and Sun Prairie also authorized that. That would have to happen here as well. T D S would have to agree that Boardman can represent the village while Boardman is also doing their employment law work. And the village would have to authorize or agree that we, that the village would be represented by Boardman while Boardman also does employment law work for T D S. So that's the conflict waiver. I talked to Anita last, I, I talked to her on Friday. The request that they're processing through T D S, it's still going through their corporate offices in Chicago or something like that. So she doesn't have a clear answer yet from them that they're going to approve it, but she thinks they will because they did in Sun Prairie. But in order for us to keep going, we, we thought we would bring this to the board tonight. If the board, if this board authorizes it and then T D S can authorize it within the next couple of days, we're hoping to have her come to a staff meeting on Thursday this week so we can start planning for this. So the first issue is, the first two issues on the agenda involve this conflict waiver and approving, hiring Attorney Galucci at the Boardman firm to, just to do the right-of-way related legal work.
So we need that motion, please?
Is that something that we can get T D S to reimburse us for?
I don't know yet. That's something we, that's something we would ask Anita.
I was worrying about item three also. I mean, we're going to hire Ruket Monkey.
Yes, we're, we're on that one.
Pardon?
We plan on asking for, sorry, ate an ice cube. We were planning on asking T D S if they would be interested in a fifty percent reimbursement.
How about a hundred percent?
So we can ask for anything, but what we need Anita for is to tell us, what can we say? You have to do this in order to work in our.
Let's go back to the first two items, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, so, how much is, if we can't get them to reimburse for this Boardman clerk, is that right? How much do we think it'll, what's the estimate?
We don't have an estimate for the total cost of the, of the work. We can talk with her about that on Friday and try and get a better sense of what does this process look like, how much time does it take, what, what does she anticipate? I do know what her hourly rate is. It's more than mine, like by a hundred dollars an hour more than mine. She, she charges on three hundred dollars an hour. This is specialized work, so she can charge a higher rate.
Right.
But I don't know exa, I, I, I think what the process is going to look like, frankly, is to process their request to work in our rights of way in such a way that we end up with an agreement with T D S that will be, that will address village concerns about how to manage that process and what they would have to pay for. And we actually don't have any ordinance on the books in the village that really addresses this issue, which is one of the reasons I wanted to bring in Anita, because she would understand if you don't have an ordinance, what, what authority do we still have to deal with this?
So, so one of my other thoughts, we're going to, if we hire her, I'm going to ask her is, is so if T D S says no, we're not going to, we're not going to fund any of this, could we front it with, with village tax money and then reimburse ourselves with franchise fees? We're going to collect franchise fees to the state for T D S, and so could we pay ourselves back?
And we can find the answer out. I don't know the answer to that, but she will.
So doesn't the village have a certain amount of leverage, given the fact that we don't have to approve letting them come in here?
Well, actually, we, that's the challenge. They do have a legal right to use our public rights of way, subject to our authority to reasonably regulate them. And this is where we need someone who understands how that dynamic works. What, what is reasonable for us to do legally speaking? How far can we go in asking them to pay for things? How far can we go in asking them to kind of work with us on making sure there's good communication with the neighborhood and so on?
Okay, so.
I was just going to say, because when they were here, I specifically asked them how much it would cost the village and they said it wouldn't cost us anything, but this is going to add up, so can we use that to encourage them to pay us back?
I guess, in a sense, if, if you just wanted to say, go ahead, do your thing and we're not going to, and just go ahead, then I suppose at least you wouldn't necessarily have an out-of-pocket cost on the front end of managing that. I'm not sure what the longer-term cost implications of that might be.
Right.
For example, we, when you're talking about public rights of way, there's a lot of stuff in the ground, okay? We got sewer, water.
Cable.
Gas, cable, and now they're going to put more stuff in the ground. We want to make sure that to the extent we have the ability to make sure that what they do is not going to be inconsistent with what's already in the ground, and to the extent we can make sure that if in the future we need them to move their stuff, we can make them do that and pay for that. Now's the time to, to see, get some good legal advice on how to structure this before they just start putting their stuff in the ground to avoid problems. It could be more expensive later. So this is one of those, an ounce of prevention is better than a pound of cure sort of things.
Right.
So we spend some money on legal fees upfront to try and manage these issues before we have a problem. We hope to save money in the long run.
So you're meeting on Thursday?
If, if she gets signed off by T D S, yeah.
Okay, and then we have another meeting Monday?
Nope, nope.
Isn't this our only meeting this month?
Uh, twenty-first.
Oh, twenty-first. I missed that.
This is a little bit different than like in my neighborhood last summer, or no, I'm sorry, maybe two years ago. Lion came in and, and exchanged what they already had, replaced what they already had in the ground. I mean, that was completely different. They were still in their, in the right-of-way. They weren't putting something in addition to, they were just replacing it. It was totally different. But here, they're going to go out throughout the village. And this is why we're going to recommend and request the board to get a proposal from Ruket Monkey to help us oversee this, you know, during eighteen.
Basically, like a staff person who can monitor the activity. Basically like a staff person who can monitor the activities.
Like when they do construction supervision.
It'd be a liaison between us and TDS to be able to handle direct complaints, be able to verify, if someone calls up and says, you know, they're in the backyard, does, do they really have an easement there? They're the ones digging up the plats and everything.
So we'll be able to reimburse the consultant's fee from franchise fees?
I'm going to, we're going to check on that.
I don't know how to approve this without knowing the answers to those things.
You have to hire her to get that answer?
Yeah, that's the thing, we have to hire Anita Galucci, who does this type of stuff.
I'll make a motion that we hire Attorney Anita Galucci to help us find answers to these questions.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Does that include approved signing of conflict waiver request?
Yes.
That's good together.
Yes, it does.
Okay. So we have the motion to second to approve the signing of the conflict waiver request and hiring Attorney Anita Galucci and the Boardman Clark Law Firm to continue with, help us with the TDS project. Further discussion or questions?
Further discussion, can we amend that to say, to be paid with franchise fees if possible?
As long as it says if possible.
If possible, sure.
If possible is what I added, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is that okay with the motion to second?
How about if you expand it even further to be reimbursed if possible, so maybe you can get TDS to reimburse it?
Okay.
Even better.
Even better.
Then we can keep franchise fees.
Even better.
Yep.
You have the second, Joe?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
So that takes us to item three, which you've touched on, direct village staff request a proposal from Ruket Milkie for a construction inspection for TDS project.
So this would come back, Jeff, to the May twenty-first meeting?
Correct.
So Jerry, get the board on this one again.
I'll make that motion.
We're actually, and one of the things in the upcoming, TDS has requested a meeting with village staff as well as, and we would invite our engineers to be there, and at that meeting is when we'd kind of try to flesh out some of this as far as the scope and everything, and then we would bring that back to you. At that time, assuming we can ask them, you know, for reimbursement either full or half or whatever, we would do that.
Okay, so you made the motion, you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. That was to request a proposal from Ruket Milkie for a construction inspection for TDS project. So that motion, second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Everything's so hard.
Item four, TDS media release to expand the Village of Oregon.
Just FYI.
Just in there. Item five, the fiber cabinet location comes from the May second park board meeting. So I'll hand this to Trustee Peterson. Do you understand how though? You read the most, it comes as a motion, I'll then ask for a second.
Right, that's, that's kind of how I figured, it's my first time, so thank you for the reminder. So the, we're talking about possible board, board direction regarding the TDS project and negotiating a possible easement agreement to locate a TDS pedestal in Stone Ridge Park on Cherrywood Drive. And the recommended motion is the approval of locating an outdoor fiber cabinet for TDS in Stone Ridge Park as decided upon, should be really location decided upon, a walkthrough of the site with TDS representatives and village staff. And then, now do we do the approval now or do we discuss a little first?
Yeah, we discuss. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're discussion.
Okay. So we had a good discussion with TDS, the, that the park, Stone Ridge Park is one of four hubs that they're going to have in the Village of Oregon. This is the only one that falls in a, like a public park. And so they were looking for either an easement or a permit to locate a cabinet somewhere within the park. They had a suggested location that's, Michael, or Jeff will show on the thing there, right between that, that tree line, the property line and the playground is only about fourteen feet, which isn't a lot of space, so we said, why don't you put it back in the like northeast corner, back by the, the tree line back there? But if they have to do any sort of maintenance, they got to drive all the way back there and, I mean, I guess Public Works sometimes does that anyway for other reasons.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
Yeah. Exactly.
I don't know what people are talking about.
So, so the.
Those are crop circles.
Yeah. At the park board, we decided, you know, we're comfortable with, with wherever they really want to put it along that edge with approval of the village staff who would walk the property with them, and they would find a mutual, mutually agreeable location to place the cabinet. So that's why we have this motion.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments?
I would only have one comment, Steve, is just that we don't know whether or not we should be asking them for an easement. I feel comfortable more or less asking for an easement, which would be an easement to get back to it as well as their little area, because I think there's a little more control that we have over that versus, versus a permit, but that's something we need to ask Anita.
Well, and I, yeah, and I, I think I feel comfortable saying that this is an easement issue. This is not public right-of-way.
Right.
So in other words, they need the village to approve an easement in order for them to do this, and we can work on, so what you need to do is identify the location and tell them, and then we'll have to go back to the village board for approval of an easement agreement.
We would bring back any kind of easement, you know, document for approval and stuff.
Questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion to second to approve locating an outdoor fiber cabinet for TDS in Stone Ridge Park as based upon a walkthrough of the site with TDS representatives and village staff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Amanda. That takes us to item C, from the March twenty-sixth Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee. Trustee Carpenter, please.
Yep, this is an ordinance, this is the third draft, amending various sections of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances relating to animals. So I will make the motion that we hold a second reading and adopt ordinance number eighteen dash zero four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any additional comments beyond our other meetings on this?
So Matt just made two, two changes, right? Since the last, from the first reading, we took out, oh, I should.
Well, the only, the only thing I remember is we did delete from the list of prohibited animals, we deleted references to chickens and foal, something like that.
Yep.
I think that was the only change.
Yep.
So that just means that it, it's not, that the chickens are not currently listed as prohibited animals. We still, if we want to authorize chickens, have to go through the process of amending the zoning code to allow those as accessory uses.
And that's going to Plan Commission for discussion.
Do you know when it's going to be there?
I don't think, I think it's going to be on June seventh, Jen, I don't think it's on, it's not on Thursday night, is it, Jeff? No, so it'll be, it'll be the June meeting.
Okay.
June seventh.
Any discussion? So the motion to second to hold the second reading and adopt ordinance number eighteen oh four, which is relating to animals, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item five, approval of minutes, there are none. Item six, approval of vouchers, we have vouchers tonight, the amount of $471,079.05 for approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't have any.
What?
Losing touch.
I believe it.
Got to move this along.
That's the best point of having a long agenda, Jerry.
No, actually, there really isn't anything in there to question.
Any questions from anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
State?
Yes.
Perpender?
Yes.
Yes.
Folling?
Yes.
Burner?
Jacobson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
She said yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you, Charlie. Item seven is community input for people to speak, there's no one here, so we'll proceed. Item eight, proclamation and announcements, item A, board comments. Anyone? What's that, Lisa?
You're doing fine, Steve.
You with this now?
I thought we were still up on this one.
Hey, we did start moving faster though, didn't we?
Much faster.
Okay, item B, staff comments?
Rachel's on there?
Brat Bash.
Yeah.
Come on out to the senior center's Brat Bash on Friday or Saturday, we're selling fresh grilled brats and dogs between ten and two. Do what you can mentally to hold the showers and cold weather at bay that they projected for us. We've got live music on Friday with Bahama Bob and his steel, steel drum, that's Caribbean music, and a balloon twister on Saturday, both of those are from ten to one, so come on out and enjoy an early spring brat.
How many decimals is that?
Bahama Bob?
Bahama Bob, it's pretty mellow music.
Okay. I think it's unamplified.
It's unamplified, it's pretty mellow.
Okay, good, I was hoping so.
Yeah. Not a little in the world.
We don't want any noise complaints, absolutely not. And we have invited all the neighbors, all of you, come.
Okay, item two, Peggy?
Board review will be Monday, May twenty-first, from four to six p.m. At this time, I believe there are a couple people that have picked up paperwork, but nobody's turned anything back in to me, so.
How many have picked up?
Just a few.
A few? Don't forget our little textbook.
I won't, I won't forget, read up, Jerry.
Okay, and then upcoming meetings are listed there, any you want to mention specifically, Mike?
Not really, they're, they're as listed, I did want to take a moment to have Jeff bring up the temporary yard lease site, I forgot to put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. So this, oh, Jeff explained.
Okay, no, go ahead, I've talked enough.
So this is at the end of Cusick Parkway, Leicon was, has been very generous in allowing us to use the site on a temporary basis. Jeff's got, we'll have signs galore down at the current site telling people to come up here, there'll be signs on Cusick Parkway. And Jeff, are you going to put up, put on the message board too, I think?
Yes.
And the message board, so, and we think this will start on May, actually, this is May tenth, isn't it?
Is it May tenth? Okay.
Actually, yeah, May, May tenth, and they'll be out there working on it tomorrow. Couple eager beavers already dropping off stuff up there.
Oh, really?
Don't do that, people. All the audience out there, don't do that, but yes.
So again, it's, you know, without Leicon helping us out, this, we would have been, it's a bit of a challenge, this is just great that they're doing this for us. It's a great site.
Yeah, so we'll show, we'll have a map over there that shows this site closed and, and have directions or have, show them where they can go for dumping their yard lease.
Actually, I did want to say one thing about the meeting dates, the board, I don't want the board to know that from 5:30 to 6:30 before the Plan Commission meeting, we're having a Civic Campus Open House with Dan DeWolfe, people are going to be invited to come and look at the plans.
Okay.
So, I'm looking for the Plan Commission meeting.
Thank you. Any questions on the meetings? It takes us to item nine, Communication, Misaligned Business, Discussion of Lit Energy, Street Light Audit and Future Billings, looks like they did an audit, found we have more street lights than they thought we had, so we're going to pay more.
Yeah, we'll be paying more, and this will obviously cause a budget impact this year, I've been working with Lisa, and we found, found some spots, we can probably cover it for this year, but it's basically an additional, almost $2,400, $2,300 to $2,400 per month. The good news is, is we've been getting probably a lot of, almost eighty-six lights that we basically for free for the so and so many years. The bad news is we'll be paying more in the future, but I think the, the real point of it is we're, we should be paying what we're using, and I think we did, just to let you know, it wasn't something just that they audited and we just accepted it, they gave us a heads-up on it, they gave us a map of what they audited and, and everything, and our public works staff went around and compared everything, we actually had a few corrections both ways, and I think we both feel comfortable with where we're at now. And it's very confusing because there's, there's several different tariffs depending on whether we own the light, the light pole, or whether the light pole was purchased originally, or whether we're kind of on a lease, you know, process, but, so it can be kind of confusing, but there's, there's a lot in it, but we feel comfortable, this is where we are at now.
I guess I don't have any problem with that, but I'm just wondering if they were asked about postponing the new billing until the end of the year, the end of this budget cycle, because this is hitting us mid-budget.
It's, it's hitting everybody that way, I think, here's the way I look at it, is, you know, PSC does allow, can allow them to go back. I mean, we are allowed, I think, twenty-four months under PSC for water billing, and we would not want to face a twenty-four month back charge, so I actually kind of look at this as being, yeah, but I know what you're saying, I mean, I think it's, they've, they've been tasked internally to get their books up, you know, to where they should be and, yeah.
I guess what I'm just saying though is if you don't ask, you're definitely not going to get anything.
Right, right.
But if you tried asking, or?
We, I asked them when they would be implementing it and whether that was a plan that they were doing with other communities, and they said, yes, this is, they actually, I think it was April first was the, or May first, May first was the, was it, it might have been April first, April Fool's Day.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Takes us to nine B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Staley Plumbing and the Village Hall Steam Coil Replacement, Recommend Motion to Approve the Proposal from Staley Plumbing and Heating for Not to Exceed Cost of $6,911 to Replacement of the Steam Coil at the Village Hall Funding from the 2018 Borrowing.
Second, or is that, do you need a first?
Yeah, we need the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
I thought you were making the motion, but it doesn't work that way.
No, that's, that's just a recommend a motion for someone to make, so, yeah, I understand. Oh, you thought that.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
We've been putting this off now for about a year and a half, and we have little drip trays up there, and we have three drip trays now on it, it's been leaking. We've held off doing it because we weren't sure our long-term plans, but, you know, realistically, we're in this building for a while still, and until we know differently. And there's only a matter of time before the steam coil actually literally totally goes, and then it's right above our new copier, and Staley's recommendation is that we would do it in this transitional period because we have to turn off the air during that period of time, so this is the time of the year to be doing it.
Any questions? So we have that motion to approve replacing the steam coil at Village Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item C, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Proclamation for National Police Week, May thirteenth through nineteenth, Recommend Motion to Approve That Proclamation as National Police Week in Oregon, Wisconsin. We need a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. So this is a fairly long proclamation, but I think it's worthwhile reading for people that are watching, so I'm going to start off and then we'll pass this way, if somebody does not want to read, it's fine to pass, we just have to go to the next person. So, this is the proclamation for National Police Week 2018, to recognize National Police Week and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the eighteen dedicated members of Oregon Police Department. Jury?
Whereas some 58,627 assaults against law enforcement officers were reported in 2016, resulting in approximately 16,677 injuries.
Whereas a total of 1,511 law enforcement officers died in the line of duty during the past ten years, which is an average of one death every 58 hours or 151 per year.
Whereas a total of 1,511 law enforcement officers died in the line of duty during the past 10 years, which is an average of one death every 58 hours or 151 per year. There were 129 officers killed nationwide in 2017, which was a 19% decrease from 2016 when 159 officers, officers were killed.
Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 21,541 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Officer Eric Allen Lyons from Cuba City, Wisconsin, Officer Jason Thomas Wyland from Everest Metropolitan, Wisconsin P.D., and Trooper Anthony Joseph Borostowski from the Wisconsin State Patrol.
Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C.
Whereas 199 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, 129 officers from 2017, including Officer Lyons, Officer Wyland, and Trooper Borostowski, and 70 officers who'd fallen in previous years.
Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 30th 30th Annual Canolite Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2017.
What were you?
Do you want to read this?
Thereas May 15th is designated as the National Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Oregon Village Board formally designates May 13th through the 19th, 2018, as Police Week in Oregon, Wisconsin, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Thank you. So we have the motion second for that. We've now read that, so people who are watching have heard what that is about. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you all for doing that. It's, some of the numbers on here kind of take you back a little bit about the rest that are involved. So I just wanted to thank all the officers of the Oregon Police Department and all of you for supporting us.
It's our pleasure. And I want that read because I think those numbers do need to be heard by people, so.
I appreciate that.
So item D, presentation of police department's 2017 annual report. So I thought it was very well done.
Thank you.
It was interesting.
Yeah, so the annual report, we try to highlight some of the things that we do in the community. And I think a lot of the pictures that you see in there demonstrate the things that we try to do for the community as well. Couldn't be more proud of, of all the officers and clerical staff that work for us. We wouldn't be able to accomplish the things that we do without them, of course. And I think that you'll see with some of the things that we highlight in here, that we really do try to make an impact on the community in a positive way. And it's not always a negative reinforcement of some of the things that we have to, to do in force. So with that, I, I welcome any questions, anything you guys have. You, you'll see in here that we were very busy. Things just continue to get busier and busier. I am proud of the fact that we are a relatively safe community and we can remain that way. We're doing everything we can to be proactive to continue that. There are some cases in here that were highlighted, some of the things that you probably never thought, as Jerry always says, never thought that we were doing those things, right? And we are. So, you know, like the Detective Bureau, all those guns that we seized off of that felon that wasn't supposed to have guns, I think it was like seven long guns and 16,000 rounds of ammunition, some of the things that we highlighted. But as you will see, we still have our challenges. Our OWI numbers are still up. Our domestic issues are still up. A lot of our property crimes, while they're, while they're still substantial, they, they were declining in 2017. Calls for service were up. I just saw Lieutenant Paganoff just did a report today that's not in here that showed in 2016, we had 17 use of force incidents, and in 2017, we had 30. And so we had a lot more contact with individuals that require a lot more means, I guess, to, to place them in custody. So, you know, I'd like to see, you know, we always aim for voluntary compliance. That's just not always the case. We tried to highlight in the report some of the good things we did, like we said, and also some of the accomplishments that we had. We recognized our first ever drug recognition expert in Officer Jansen. That's a very strenuous course, 132 hours of training, required a lot of testing, and he will serve us and other agencies in the area very well in hoping to detect drug impairment in drivers. And that's a big issue right now, obviously, what's going on with the opioid epidemic, epidemic. And I think on the back of it, you'll also see some generous donations that we received. So we were very thankful for those. We talked about the carbon monoxide detectors, and that was donated from Andy Seest in the town of Oregon, which, you know, there was an issue with some of the explorers. The K-9 unit, while still going strong, he was out with injury for half of the year. So some of those numbers were kind of down as well. But overall, very proud of the men and women of the Oregon Police Department. And hopefully, we can continue with being proactive and, and keeping crime down.
Good, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Samantha?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm wondering if you keep any sort of statistics about how many times your crossing guards report back on violators with kids? Because I, I tend to hear this from a lot of people, how people drive crazy and, and, like, I'm just wondering if you track that at all?
I don't, I don't track that. Um, I, I haven't been able to do that until recently. Now with Spillman, our new records management system, I should be able to track things like that. I don't know that we necessarily get them from our crossing guards as much as we do with the bus drivers.
That, too.
Yes, they're the ones that report back. And I don't, I don't recall seeing as many come across my desks this year as we did last year, because we try to address those right away.
That was a great report. That was just a question.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? In case that takes us to item E, police department monthly reports. Anything to add there, Chief?
No, as usual, we're, we're trying to do our best to keep the community safe. Like I mentioned with the annual report, OWIs and drugs seem to be prevalent as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, that's informational purposes.
Okay.
Boy, I did forget to mention that we did obviously become accredited last year with the core standards. And that was a big deal to get those up and running. And then that was 49 core standards, and we'll be working our process to full accreditation, which is over 240 standards. So that'll be processed.
Thank you. Item F, youth center first quarter report. One thing I thought stood out is they had 117 unduplicated kids going there in these first three months. That's a, a great number for the youth center. So it's meeting these kids. So thanks to Diane Newland, the director, and the other staff there. Item G, scheduled Lincoln Road closure noticed, May 5th to May 11th. It's on the village's webpage and Facebook. Comments, Jeff?
No, it's just self-explanatory. It's part of that tying of Bryn Hill Inn and rebuilding of a small section there of Lincoln Road on the north side of the, so they're working on that and should be paving in the next two days, three days.
Okay. Item A, discussion possible action proclamation for municipal clerks appreciation week. Recommended motion, approve proclamation designated May 6th through 12th, 2018 as municipal clerks appreciation week in Oregon, Wisconsin. Need that motion, please?
I make it.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So we will likewise read this. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world as the oldest profession among public servants, and?
Whereas the municipal clerk provides professional connections between the citizens, the governing bodies, and the agencies at the local, county, and state levels, and?
You fine?
Have I got it all messed up?
No, no, you're fine. You're fine.
Okay. Whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their nature and perpetually rendering eco-services to all the residents through transparency and accountable government and practices, and?
Whereas the municipal clerk processes and distributes all agendas and actions of their governing body, serves as the official record keeper for the municipality, issues licenses and permits, facilitates the annual board of review and municipal redistricting project, attends various meetings of the municipality, and serves as a resource center on functions of the local government and the community, and?
Whereas the 1,854 municipal clerks and 72 county clerks contribute to election administration by attending required training and dedicating themselves to providing fair, non-biased, nonpartisan, accurate, and responsible elections in Wisconsin, and?
Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the responsibilities of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, focus groups, and annual conferences across Wisconsin.
Now therefore, I, Scott Walker, governor of the state of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim May 6th through 12th, 2018, as municipal clerks appreciation week. So thanks, Peggy, to you and all your staff and what you do. I wanted to bring this forward for everybody here as we talk about a clerk. So thank you. So all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Item I, discussion possible action regarding Oregon Ice Arena Incorporated Stormwater Management and Access Eastman Agreement. Recommended motion is to approve that agreement with the Oregon Ice Arena Incorporated. Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
This is just a part of, part of the South Perry Parkway project. It's also part of our desire to want to keep that area looking nice over, over time. And it's something that's kind of been a, a little burden for the ice arena. And so this is, we, we're using that pond for our stormwater from the roadway. And we just gave them the proposal. If we could use the pond, then we would take over maintenance for it.
Okay.
It's a win-win for both.
Yeah. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item J is FYI, the village's 2018 overall assessed values increased 3.92% compared to an increase of 5.6% for 2017. Now please note, this is before the board of review. Item K, discussion possible action regarding Waterfall Motel at 1053 Park Street and asbestos inspection proposal. Recommended motion is to approve the proposal dated April 19, 2018, from Advanced Health and Safety LLC for the asbestos inspection and report for the Waterfall Motel Building for not to exceed value of $2,950. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Go ahead.
Can I just make a, if they, this is just to determine the status if there's asbestos. If there is asbestos, it's going to cost more to remove it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there would be an abatement. This, this is the, the step for demolition is you first get the, the study, they determine what it is. It's, honestly, I can tell you now, it's probably going to be caulking and the, and the glazing and possibly some tiles. They come back with that report, and then we'll come back with probably a proposal for abatement, removal prior to demolition, which we will have to do sometime along the way. And then our goal is to prepare for a test burn or for a practice burn for the fire department this late summer or fall.
And the village, Jerry, answer your, your question. The village borrowed extra money from the city trust fund loan to deal with knocking the building down.
Good.
That, that gets right.
You didn't even let me get the question.
I know that. I saw you smile, and I went, I knew who was going to ask. No, I wanted to make sure the board knew that.
I look over, and Mike's already looking at me.
That's right. Got you, pick.
No, actually, what happened was Peggy and I drove that guy nuts at the stake because I kept changing the amount. And, you know, we borrowed the 550 for, for the property, and I thought we were going to need money to, so then we went back and added $50,000 to the end, so.
Okay, anything else? So we have motion second to approve the proposal for asbestos report at the Waterfall Motel Building. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item L, discussion possible action regarding park board appointment. Recommended motion is to approve appointing Emmanuel Hannibal as an alternate student member to the park board for the term ending in 2019.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. And he's interested, he says, yeah, more in local government and getting involved and learning more, so.
Get highly recommended by the, by Jim, the high school principal.
Okay, great. Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item M, village acquired surplus office furniture from Oscar Myers facility.
This, this is an amazing thing that the Public Works Department did along with the police department. They went out in, over three days, was that about?
Yeah.
Picked up?
Two and a half days, yeah.
Just really nice furniture, surplus furniture, that we're going to build, use, and not have to buy it. I think Jeff has figured.
Could be anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 worth of furniture that we were able to repurpose, dividers that we'll be using in the clerk area, desks for the offices and stuff, so.
Yeah, see, it's a, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, great.
Yep.
Item N, FYI, only Oregon Ice Arena paid their agreed-upon amount of $3,369.93 for the general development plan and specific plan for ordinance number 17-15. So they're proceeding with those things. Item O, temporary storage for public works equipment. Recommended motion, authorize public works to enter into a lease agreement with Troy Helverson at Napa Auto Parts for $500 per month on a month-to-month basis for storage of public works equipment and materials in the storage area located off of North for Oak Avenue. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. That's just when the other building is torn down. It's a place to keep the stuff, right?
Right, well, we're having to actually move stuff out of there now as we, as we make the transition. We've made the transition now to summer. And we're storing a bunch of furniture down there at the public works garage right now, too. So we're a little cramped for space and we're losing that shed. So Gary went around, talked to a lot of farmers, and we were running kind of out of luck and happened to be in Napa and talked to him about, there's a large shed behind there. It's a nice covered shed. And I think he's been, I think it's a very fair cost per month for, for the storage we need.
Okay.
And we have a very good relationship with, through the years with Napa. They've been very supportive of us and our local business.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Jeff. Item P, discussion possible action regarding J.C. Park West fundraising update. Want authorized the finance director to request email proposal from Oregon banks for interest rates for fundraising deposits and fee for the credit card square.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Anything we need to? We, so, so this is a, you know, we're, we're having funds turn into the village, and we thought rather than us picking the bank, we thought we'd just do an email and say who can give us the best interest rate. And then the square we're talking about is we, people can pay with their credit card.
Okay.
We're hoping the bank will give it for free, obviously. So then Lisa, we'll just send out an email, and we're just going to do the local banks in Oregon.
Yeah.
And whoever gets us the best rate, we'll go get the, we'll deposit the money there.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item Q, discussion possible action regarding temporary Class B license for Foundation for